All right, good evening and welcome to the November 18th meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals here at Falmouth Town Hall. Calling the meeting to order, and we'll ask everyone to please silence their cellphones at this time. I'll introduce the board, starting at my far right. Your far left is Jerry Potomac, who is an associate member of the board, followed by James Morse, who is a full-voting member. To my right is Scott Solinsky, who is the vice-chair. My name is TJ Hurry, I am the Chair of the Board. To my left is Bob Dugan, who is the Board's Clerk. Also with us tonight is Noreen Stockman, who is the zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, who is the recording secretary for the night. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying zoning bylaws for the town, and we consider requests for special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the bylaws, which have been approved by town meeting and the Attorney General's Office for the Commonwealth. All decisions the Board makes are made through the public hearing process. The Board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicant and from the public, and to also allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the Clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing, and then present any pertinent information from the file, such as referrals from town departments, and summarizing correspondences to the Board. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, and time may be extended by vote of the Board. The Board will then question the applicant, and the public will be invited to comment as well. Public comment should be directed only at the project itself. We ask you to please refrain from any personal or derogatory statements. Public comment can include an opinion in favor, in opposition, or it might just simply be a question about the nature of the project. The Chair will limit discussion in the interest of time in the event that comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the Chair and should come to the podium to your left. We ask you to please state your name and address for the record. We do limit public comment to two minutes per person. We do ask you to stand behind the podium and speak into the microphone. That microphone is meant for the benefit of viewers watching on FCTV. It is not meant for amplification within the room. The Board will then either continue or close the hearing when the Board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision. By motion and vote of the Board, the hearing will be closed. In the alternative, the Board may continue the hearing to a future date and time. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And as for Board discussions and decisions, the Board may then further discuss a project among ourselves. We would make a motion to either deny or approve that would be made and voted upon. A motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a supermajority, is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote, such as a three-to-two vote, would be a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the Board for two years unless the project is substantially different. So turning to the agenda for the night, we do have public comment, followed by two continuations, three new public hearings, and we do have a few items on our open meeting or agenda. So up first for tonight is public comment. This public comment period is meant for anything that is not on the agenda. So is there anyone out there with something to say that is not on the agenda? All right, seeing none. Would we like to take one out of order?
Yes, so I'd like to make a motion to take one application out of order, which is 85-21, Seacoast Tower Development LLC, 50 Highfield Drive in Thelma.
Motion to take application 85-21 out of order, made by Bob, second by Scott. Thank you, Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes unanimously.
So we have a request for a continuance from the applicant. It reads, "Dear Honorable Members of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals, we represent Seacoast Tower Development LLC with respect to the above referenced application pending before the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. On behalf of the applicant, we respectfully request a continuance of the upcoming public hearing scheduled for Thursday, November 18th, to a Board meeting in December, which we understand is scheduled for December 16th. Unfortunately, I'm traveling out of the country on November 18th. I would appreciate accommodation of the continuance. If you have any questions, don't have any hesitation to contact us." And that's sound, Edward Depard Jr., Esquire from Brown and Rudnick LLP, which is the representation.
Very good.
And we are available on the 16th. So, given that, I would make a motion to continue 85-21 without opening to 1216.
Moved.
All right, so a motion to continue this hearing to December 16th, 2021, 6:30 here at Town Hall, made by Bob, second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good. All right, coming back to the top of the order, we have our continuations. Application 73-21 Perrin Trustees, 54 Marshall Drive in East Thelma, requesting a special permit to construct and attach garage addition with habitable space above. Voting members on this project are myself, Scott Solinsky, Bob Dugan, James Morse, and SP Scott Peterson, so he's not here, so that would be the four of us.
I think I was at that hearing, so I could... Wait, is this a continuation?
It's a continuation, correct.
If I was there, I should be able to vote.
All right, so we'll check on that.
Yeah.
Any...
No, he was here for that, so...
Okay, so Jerry, you were here, so we'll appoint you as a voting member. And for the applicant?
Yep. How you doing? My name is Peter Langen, Langen Contracting, out of Thelma, and I'm here representing Andy and Lisa Perrin. This project was 54 Marshall, had been in a couple times. It's a two-car garage addition, and we had everything all set. We were just waiting for clarification from the Board of Health regarding whether a room that was in the basement, whether it was a bedroom or not. And I believe, well, I know Ashley has the note now from Board of Health, and I think that...
Yeah, so we do, we did receive a letter in the file from Scott McGann, the health agent. It does state that the property has been issued a four-bedroom septic system installation permit. The floor plan shows only four bedrooms, as the basement bedroom has insufficient means of aggress due to window height. When the building permit arrives, Health should make a note in the application that this room should not be used as a bedroom.
All right, so there it is. And I think that, is that all we were waiting for?
Yeah, it was it.
That's pretty much it.
All right.
Any other questions?
Yeah, anything else, or I think we're...
No.
All right. Any Board questions? Jerry?
No.
James?
No, thank you.
Scott?
No, sir.
Bob?
No.
All right, members of the public, any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project tonight? Seeing none, back to the Board.
Motion to close.
All right, motion to close. I'll give that one to James, second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes unanimously. Hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken.
Some motion to approve the conditions.
Second.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, James. Findings?
240-3C, 240-69E, 240-216, not substantially more detrimental on all examples. The applicant is going to be adding a two-car garage with habitable space above. They did submit photos of the basement, which looks like a kitchen area, showing that there is no cooking facilities, just a refrigerator, counter, cabinets, and sink. We did get a letter from the health agent that said that the bedroom in the basement shown on the plans can't be considered a bedroom due to the lack of means of aggress for window height. The rest of the plan showed two bedrooms on the first floor, and then two bedrooms on the second floor. On the second floor, there is an office, but it has a cased opening. Again, not to be considered a bedroom. Was testimony that this is being used as a single-family home, not an apartment. They did submit a lot coverage calculation worksheet. Testimony and plans from the health department say that they also submitted the information for the four-bedroom septic system.
No opposition.
Anything else for findings?
That's it for me, unless anyone else wants to chime in.
All right. About conditions?
So, home is to be used as a single family. No cooking facilities allowed in the basement. No bedrooms allowed in the basement. Property is a four-bedroom and will remain a four-bedroom. Noreen, there's a note in here about the erosion controls as proposed, so I think it lists what the proposal was in here. So we'll just condition that on the erosion controls that were proposed. Property must have drywells to handle the roof runoff.
Were those drywells on the plan?
Yes, they are.
They're on the plan.
Yep.
Regarding the water department...
That was the water department comment, standard hours of work.
There should be plenty of room to keep building supplies on-site, too.
The water service in Maine must, the whole water service in Maine must be represented on the plans. If the water service is upgraded in size due to additional bathroom, water meter must be inside the home, if not already there.
That was on the plan, right?
It's only partially on the plan, so they might have to update it. Put in the findings that the health referral mentioned that the health department should note that there are no bedrooms in the basement, even though we're conditioning no bedrooms We did condition as a single family, so that covers rentals, too, also, right? If they rent it, they have to rent it as a single family.
There was testimony on that, too, if that's on the record, anyway.
That's all I got.
All right. Last call for anything else, either findings or conditions, anyone? All right, so that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Bob and second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes unanimously.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, up next we have the continuation of application 57-17M, North Star Place LLC, 123 Burke Cranland Road in East Thelma, requesting a modification, a comprehensive permit number 57-17, to allow modifications to previously approved plans. Voting members on this are myself, Scott Solinsky, Bob Dugan, and James Morse.
So, Mr. Chairman, regarding this hearing, I do want to raise a point of order. We last heard this on October 7th. Today's the 18th, it's been about six weeks. As of today, there has been absolutely no submittals to the file or updates since our last hearing. Without submittals to the file, members can't use it for reference to do any kind of a site visit. It is in our procedural rules that the information must be received. So I would request, as a Board member, that we don't hear this tonight because of lack of information, and that we continue this to another date certain.
All right. Should we hear the applicant on that point briefly?
Is there anything in the file?
There's nothing, there's nothing at all that's been submitted. So at our last hearing, they were supposed to submit plans showing what was there, changes, comparisons. You know, it's been a six-week timeframe. I did check the file this afternoon, because I was going to go over and do a last site visit after I left work. There was nothing then in the file. If we don't have anything in the file, there's just no way to do it, and...
Chairman, I'd suggest we hear from the applicant's representative as to why we shouldn't deny tonight.
Mr. Marioni, last time, six weeks ago, we did cover a lot of ground, and we were expecting a number of items in the file.
Hold on, put on an order, please. We have to reopen this to take any kind of testimony?
Well, no, so we continued this till tonight, so...
So we're still open?
Yep.
All right, just making sure.
No, it is open, yep. But, Mr. Marioni, we were expecting a number of things to be submitted to the Board, and it has been to date, so... What do you say?
Well, I understand I didn't submit the plan yet, it hasn't been completed. I did call and have a discussion with Noreen and ask if she thought we should continue. She thought it would be a good idea that I came and at least discussed what we're going to put on the plan as to where the dumpster locations are, and if you're going to accept the concrete curb stops instead of the sidewalk. So I'm here because we're discussing those things, I guess, which are the last couple of things we have to put on the plan.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
That was the point of our conversation last time, Mr. Marioni. You were going to come to us with it all prepared, so we could discuss it. This kicking the can down the road isn't working for me personally.
That's not what I'm trying to do, Mr. Marioni.
I understand, and I'm not accusing you of doing it purposely, but we've already gone over this and over it, and we've got nothing.
Well, I wouldn't say you have nothing.
I took a site visit out there, not one thing has changed. And you have nothing, not one thing, to add to the file. Why should we hear it tonight?
I can't say I disagree.
I thought we were pretty clear on what we were looking for, for you to present at this meeting.
I can't say that I disagree with you. I did ask, I did a call about an extension, but I still would like to know, are we doing dumpsters, or are we doing polecots? Because I'm trying to finalize the plan.
That was for you to propose. We talked about the fact that we were...
I'm proposing polecots. Sorry.
At the risk of sounding facetious, and I'm not trying to do that, we talked about already the fact that you had a set of plans that you didn't abide by. If you think me personally, voting on this, is going to, you know, correct as we go and leave anything to chance going forward, I'm not. I'm not voting on anything personally until I see it written down, proposed by you and your engineer, personally. I'm of the opinion, I don't want to hear anything or vote anything until I see that. And it's up to you and your engineer to come up with the solutions to the problems you've created, sir. That's how I look at it.
Understood.
So just to interject, because we did have a conversation today, and I guess one of the issues that was raised was, does the Board want dumpsters or not? Because if you are not in favor of changing to that, it doesn't make sense to put them on the...
That would include polling the Board. Some of us did want it, some of us didn't. It's up to him to propose a plan that then we vote on.
Yeah, so I guess what I would just interject is, if there's any changes that are going to be requested here at all, we can't do them piecemeal. We can't wait till a new hearing comes up and let's discuss these three things, because maybe we'll check the plan. Now, you said the plan isn't completed yet. You've had a six-week timeframe. What's the holdup in a six-week timeframe? Because our scheduling is just tight, and I didn't expect not to have the information here tonight. I just assumed it was there, so I didn't look at this file till late. I would have brought this up earlier in the week, if I didn't see it earlier in the week. But as an applicant, you have to come to us with the whole proposal. You have to say, this is what we're looking for, here's what our options are, here's what you can look at. This is the second, this will be another continuation. We've discussed this project before. So what is the holdup on actually doing any kind of a plan over a six-week time period?
There is not, the holdup was that Mike Moselli had to go out and do, with his GPS, locate, all he had on the plan was the buildings. So he had to locate the cul-de-sac, locate, measure the changes that we had. There was some problems in the scheduling with his surveyor.
So if you installed, if there was a change in the plan or change in the installation, why wouldn't that already be on an actual physical plan since all this has been done?
I think we know the answer to that, is because we didn't build it according to the plan.
But if you didn't build it according to the plan, what actual physical plan did you submit to the building department? Or did you not submit the changes to the building department? So you've changed where the drainage is, for example?
No, we did not.
In the original plan, the drainage is not in the location it was, because, you know, all due respect, it was labeled, this was a play area. It wasn't, it wasn't a swale. It wasn't set up that way. And if you can, you can disagree with that, we have the plans. My question is, where is the plan that shows that installation that was actually done? Do you have that, or did you go without?
You have it. It's a plan of record that you approved, that's in the comp permit. That's exactly where the drainage is on those plans. I'd be happy to show them to you.
I don't believe that...
You saw something else. I don't know what you saw, but that's not the approved plan. That drainage is where it's supposed to be.
So, question would be this, in the original plan, when that play area was discussed for the complex, why would somebody approve a play area that's now located in a five- or six-foot ditch with rocks on the bottom?
I have no idea what you're talking about. That was not what was approved.
We've already covered this.
So, yeah, so, at this point, I would make a motion to find out what our next available date is around the schedule that we already have.
So, Mr. Marioni, I'll say, here's the problem with the Board's schedule. We're getting into the holiday season, we don't meet on, obviously Thanksgiving, it's Thursday, we won't meet them. And the Board's scheduled the way it is, we're booked so far out, we're looking at January 13th.
That's...
Which doesn't really help anyone.
We have to accept that.
Which doesn't really help anyone.
We'll have the plan way ahead of that. It's almost done, it's just, we'll have it in weeks before that.
So the administrators, January 13th, is that the...
We have to get another extension, is there an extension on this?
Yeah.
Do you have to sign an extension? Does that put us past?
180 days, if I'm looking at the right one, it's February 15th, so we'll be...
I'll approve any extensions that you need for time on that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Quick question, that I know people don't generally like to poll, and I know he's made some changes, but I think at the last meeting, there was somewhat of a discussion, dumpsters or no dumpsters. If he comes in, and I'll say with no dumpsters, and we say we want dumpsters, it's going to delay it again. I think, I know I've been out there, I would think some people...
Jerry, did you...
Yes, I attended that, I did attend.
Did you attend, or did you recuse from this?
I did not recuse. I filed a disclosure that North Star built my house, well, I filed disclosure in accordance with Frank Duffy's requirements, which happens to be consistent with the disclosure I filed almost a year ago.
All right, I'm just making sure.
No, 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 I just want to make it so people...
So the listed, just so you know, and I'm not disregarding you, I'm just saying, the actual voting members that were placed on this are Terrence Hurry, Scott Solinsky, myself, and James Morse.
You know, what I'm saying is, I can discuss this. If you don't want me to vote on this, I don't care. I think I can still discuss it based on our procedures, and I think it's fair to him that the Board either say, we want dumpsters, do we want two dumpsters, one for trash and one for recycling, or, and I know some people don't like it, do we want them to go with totes?
Without a plan that shows location of dumpsters, and what the setup is going to be out there, this Board has nothing for reference. If somebody said tonight, I decided I want to put two dumpsters in, maybe in this location, maybe in another location, we have no depiction of that at all.
That's not my point, excuse me, that's not my, the point is, if he had an inkling to come back, option A, totes. Option B, this is where we'd put dumpsters, this is how we would enclose them, this is if we would have one or two. I mean, I think that's fair advice to give to him.
I understand, but that's what we did.
Jerry, we've already done that on a plan, and they didn't do it. What makes you think we want to do it without a plan?
No, but we actually asked for that.
We asked them to come in with their options and what they're setting.
They had a plan that they were supposed to build this by, and they didn't.
Oh, okay, so they're supposed to have dumpsters. Wait a minute, could you let me finish?
That question was already asked and answered and approved.
Okay, so, let's get the facts straight, for me anyways. They have a plan that showed dumpsters, and they didn't build them, is that correct?
Their plan has multiple issues with it that didn't get them...
I'm talking about, excuse me, I'm talking about the dumpsters. I listened through the other one.
Yeah, dumpsters did, no, correct, the dumpsters did not go in. In fact, the pads disappeared.
Okay, so that, oh, that's an issue.
Yeah.
Okay, it wasn't, it wasn't changed.
So again, not to beat a dead horse with this, I would make a motion, because we were not given any of the proper information before the hearing, and based on our procedural rules, that we continue this to December, to January 13th, 2022. And there is testimony from the applicant's representatives that they have no issue with signing a continuance.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, may I also request that Noreen allow me to email Mr. Dugan the approved plan, so we can see that the drainage is where it's supposed to be?
Whatever you do, you email them to her for the entire Board. Not for a single person, it's for the whole Board, and then the whole Board individuals can look it over.
Thank you.
Exactly. All right, so the motion was made by Bob to continue this hearing to January 13th, 2022? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Marioni. All right, on to our new hearings. We already took care of application 85-21, that was taken out of order, granted a continuance to our December 16th date. That brings us to application 88-21, Mitchell Trustees, 5 Kichapam Way in T-Ticket, requesting a special permit to raise and reconstruct the existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling.
Application number 88-21, Frank S. and Monique T. Mitchell, trustees, 23 Northgate Road, Wellesley, Mass. Applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240-3C of the Code of Thelma to raise and reconstruct the existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling on subject property known as 5 Kichapam Way, T-Ticket, Mass. For referrals, health department is fine with this proposal. The Board of Health granted the foundation change, providing no increase in bedrooms beyond three, with conditions relative to the future of the existing septic system. The plan does show three proposed bedrooms. Conservation Commission issued an order of conditions for this property on August 23rd, 2021. The order of conditions and plan of reference, last revision date, 6/29/21, were attached to the correspondence for the record. From engineering department, the application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Kichapam Way is a private right of way in this area. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Project was not directing a stormwater runoff to public property butters or public rights of way. Where this project falls in the jurisdiction of Conservation Commission, we defer to the Commission for Stormwater Management, Construction, Erosion Controls. We also recommend subsection 991, a fixing of legible numbers required in time limit for compliance. Upon completion of the construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence. From the water department, the existing home is fed with a one-inch service from a two-inch main in Kichapam Way. The existing water meter is inside, which will be the case for the rebuilt home as well. The meter must be pulled, the water off, and the service cut and capped prior to demolition. Planning, no comment. We do have one letter of support from Kathleen Kelly, 147 T-Ticket Path. Dear Board Members, regarding application for special permit, 5 Kichapam Way, this confirms that the undersigned has reviewed the plans for raising and reconstruction, and has no objections to the plans for the project. There was also a lot coverage analysis submitted, Attorney Moynihan, and that is it.
All right. And for the applicant, we have Attorney Moynihan, and we'll be appointing Jerry as a voting member. And before you begin, did we pronounce the name correctly?
How do you say the street?
How do you say the street name?
Kichapam?
Kichapam.
I was going to look it up to see what it meant, but I didn't have time, but I was curious to know what it actually meant, but...
Okay.
Beautiful property on the pond, maybe. Anyway, for the record, I'm Laura Moynihan, Thelma's attorney, and I represent the Mitchells, Frank and Monique, who are here this evening, along with Marshall Works, the designer for the project, and Tom Bunker's office has done the engineering and survey work. This is the property, it's off of T-Ticket Path, so you'll see it right about in the middle of the screen in yellow, it's right on, right on the pond, and here's a bit of a blow-up. I show you this, the property is outlined in yellow. The neighbor who filed the letter of no objection... The neighbor who filed the letter of no objection at 147 is right, is the direct of butter, right next door, which would be most immediately impacted by the changes. The one, house at 151, I believe, is actually up on a hill. So, if you've been down at the property, you'll see that really when you come down Kichapam Way, there really are just these two houses that are noticeable there on the right, one of them being the Mitchells. This is the rear of the Mitchell home on the pond. And another shot of the deck and the lower level, which now contains habitable space. And this is the front view of the house. So, we have the existing conditions within a developed neighborhood. The lot coverage is 28.22, so it's actually over 25%. So, this is an application under 240-3 only. We're not applying under the lot coverage section of the bylaw because we're already nonconforming over the 25%. So, it's a 240-3 application. The existing coverage is under the 40% at 35.61. We have three bedrooms, building height is about 20 feet, and the property is located in a special hazard flood zone. The existing conditions here, the outline of the existing home is in pink, and the proposed footprint for the new home is in yellow. You'll see the nonconforming setbacks. There's one to the front yard at 3.7 feet. And then there is also a nonconforming setback to the 2.1-foot contour to perch pond. So, that's supposed to be 50 feet under the bylaw, and we're at 20 on this property. This is the existing conditions plan. You'll see the numerous lines here running through, which is significant to the project because the house does have to be elevated. This is the velocity zone here. We have the 25-foot offset Conservation Commission velocity zone. So, the entire site is in a flood hazard zone. This portion of the house and driveway will be altered, really to benefit those zones. The paved driveway will be coming up, and there'll be a impervious surface installed. This rear corner portion of the house essentially is coming off. So, Conservation has approved this already under an order of conditions. This drawing shows the site plan. So, the new footprint is in green, the old footprint is in pink. The side yard setbacks are now conforming, they'll stay conforming. And the nonconforming setbacks will actually be better. So, we have the existing basement plan here, which is showing the habitable space in the basement. There's a bedroom there, a den, some storage, mechanicals, washer dryer. And then we have the first floor, two bedrooms, family room, kitchen, deck space. So, relatively small, modest-sized home, but interestingly enough, with the new plan, the habitable space is actually being reduced by just under 300 square feet. And that's because of the flood zones, the basement in the new home will be unfinished. No habitable space there at all, no mechanicals. So, the reconstructed dwelling will be slightly less. Footprint will be reduced by 401 square feet. The lot coverage will be reduced to 23.25%. The overall lot coverage will be reduced by 10.71% to 24.9. And as I mentioned, the driveway, impervious paved driveway will come up and replaced with shell, and three bedrooms will be maintained in the house. So, the front yard setback will be increased to five feet slightly at the steps, eight feet to the dwelling. The setback to the 2.1 contour to perch pond will be increased to 28 feet from 20. Building height will go to 30 feet nine inches. Keep in mind, the first floor elevation in the flood zone has to be 14 feet, or is at 14 feet six inches. So, that is really the reason for the height increase, they can't build in the flood zone. Stormwater drainage improvements, big improvements on the property with dry wells being installed, controlling the runoff. Again, all of this has been approved by Conservation. The existing septic system is going to be used. The Health Agent has confirmed that there is no increase in bedrooms. The Board of Health did approve the proposal in September, but has not issued a written decision yet. We tried to get that for you, but it has not been issued. But they did approve the septic system use here. So, this is a plan showing the proposed new dwelling. And you've got this deck space here, kitchen, living area, master bedroom on the first floor, walk-in closet, master bathroom, and the entranceway. On the second floor, we have two bedrooms, and then we have an open den area and another bathroom. And this is the basement, which is showing the unfinished area, storage, and some garage space, which is now lacking or absent at the property. These are the elevations, proposed elevations. So, you see the front of the house and the right-hand side of the house as you're looking at it on the road. And here we have the rear of the property and the left elevation. Those are all in your file. So, under the bylaw, we're looking at the standards under 240-3, the nonconforming structure and site as to lot coverage and setbacks. The reconstructed dwelling is in keeping with the neighborhood homes, I would submit. As far as the bulk goes, it did, and lot coverage to a certain extent. I did file a lot coverage analysis at the request of your staff. It is higher in lot coverage than some of the neighboring homes by a few percentage here and there. But I think if you look at the size of this lot, it's at 8,000 square feet compared to the other lots in the neighborhood, you see why there's that variation. This is a relatively smaller lot. But I did take some photographs of some houses in the neighborhood. So, this one is right on the corner near our house. And this one is 161 T-Ticket Path. Just to show you that there are some pretty large houses with bulk in the neighborhood. This one's at 53 Oak Ridge Road, which is just across sort of the corner from Kichapam Way. And this one is down further on T-Ticket Path at 66. But this is the house next door, you see from the back. So, you see that that house as well has the walkout lower level, even though it's one story at the front. So, just to show you that in comparison to the bulk, think here, that the house is in keeping with what is in the neighborhood. So, under the zoning bylaw, the, I would submit the relevant factors are that we have no increase in bedrooms, we have a reduction in habitable space, we have an increase of the nonconforming setbacks, we have a decrease in lot coverage, drainage improvements, decrease of structure and impervious material in the flood zones, which is a benefit. Exterior improvements benefit, are a benefit to the neighborhood, no adverse traffic issues. The direct of butter at 147, this house I showed you there, has no objections. And there really aren't any other homes in the immediate vicinity that would be impacted by the proposal. So, I would submit the project is not substantially more detrimental. There are beneficial impacts that are clear. Certainly beneficial impacts to the wetland resources and the flood zone by the reconstruction, new construction to the flood zone requirements. And I would submit that the standards of 243 and 240, 216 have been met. And then lastly, this is a nice little picture right across the street that I couldn't resist taking, so it's a beautiful spot. So, be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Attorney Moynihan. Bob, you want to start us off?
Yeah, actually, the only question I have, and I don't know how much relevance it is, is that a right-of-way to the water for the neighborhood, or is that?
I believe that's the landing, T-Ticket Path landing, Frank's nodding. But I've seen that before on title work, that there's some sort of landing.
So, do you have an idea on construction itself, when this would take place, or time period?
Frank, do you want to come up and speak to that, or Marshall?
I'm Frank Mitchell. My wife and I own the property. The hope is next September, but with the numbers we're getting, we're not sure just yet to answer your question. So, we may wait, we're not sure. It should be the fall of next year.
I was just asking, because of the fall, if people are trying to access some kind of area, the fall would probably.
There's a lot of neighbors that come down there, though, to answer your question from the neighborhood. We love it, with their dogs. And so, that's a little neighborhood beach. I don't know the technical access, but that road is open for folks to come.
That's the only question I have.
All right, thanks, Bob. And Scott?
Did you say there's an engineer here?
Tom Bunker is the engineer. He's not here, but I have him available by phone if need be.
Well, I see, I see where, there's no foundation plan, and the grade, it looks like it was raised to give five feet of separation of groundwater. And I'm just wondering if the new foundation footings are going to be in the water? They don't show an elevation on them. Are they going to be, how close are they to the water?
The foundation footings?
Well, you have elevation one, two, but on the, on the record of groundwater elevation, the highest is 1.17, which would make it actually at its highest a little higher. I just was curious what the bottom of the footings that they're replacing. I know it says there, the existing foundation's going to be removed, so I'm wondering if they're digging the water to put these new footings in.
Let's see.
And you probably aren't going to be able to answer that, and I was just curious how close that was to putting them back in the water.
Okay.
Seeing you're adding a second story to the house and all of that.
Marshall, can I?
Sure.
Maybe Marshall can try and answer this. I can text Tom, too, as well.
Marshall Works, K. Marshall Works Design. So, in theory, yeah, that, you know, where the frost wall is at the back, that would go down four feet. So, it'd be pretty close to that line. I have run into situations like that before and consulted an engineer if it is an issue, and they usually increase the size of the footings to compensate for it.
Broaden the footprint?
Right, exactly, yeah.
And it is a slab, so it's all going to be backfilled under that. So, if they broaden the footprint?
Yes, yep.
Okay, Laura, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anything else, Scott?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, James?
No questions, thank you.
No questions.
All right. And Attorney Moynihan, I missed it during your presentation. What's the proposed height of the new structure?
30 feet nine inches.
30 foot nine, okay, thank you. Public comment, are there any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project? Seeing none, back to the board.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion closed made by James, second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously, hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And how would the board like to proceed?
Motion approved with conditions?
Second.
Motion approved with conditions made by Bob, second by James, thank you. Findings?
240, 3C.
Yeah, 240-3C, this is a raise and reconstruction. It's located within the Great Bay Coast upon Overlake District. RSC zone, and it's completely in flood plain. VE and AE, VE elevation 15, AE elevation 12. They're actually going to reduce the lot coverage by structures from 28.22 to 23.25. Lot coverage by structures, park and paving, 35.61 to 24.9.
On the event, when they're digging, they find encounter water, they're going to make adjustments to correct that with footprint, of footing.
The bedroom count will remain at three.
Letter of support, not imposed.
Yeah, the letter of support is actually from the direct of butter, even though it's 147 T-Ticket Path.
You have to put in that that's the public landing or the private way for the landing, or it's.
It's a water access for a neighborhood.
Hate to be technical.
What's the terminology for that? What is it exactly? Is it a private, is it a shared use for the landing? Is it assumed to use?
We could just put there's water access on the street.
Not sure if we can really apply too much.
We are not the land court, let's just say that.
Well, he did say that people continue to have access.
Some sort of public access.
Testimony of access, let's leave it at that.
Access is the water from the street. Health Department granted a foundation change, providing no increase in bedrooms beyond the three, relative to the future of the existing septic system. There is a concom order of conditions from 8/23/21, last revised plan date, 6/29/21.
Water service has to be cut and capped during demolition?
Yeah, we'll condition that.
Okay.
Project eliminates or reduces several nonconformities, elimination of the side nonconformity, a reduction for the contour nonconformity from 21 to 28 feet. Project brings the residents in compliance with FEMA guidelines.
Yeah, so the.
Keeping with the neighborhood.
Footprint reduction by 401 square feet. That setback will be, go from five to eight. Height is 30, 30 feet nine inches, but that's based on a 14-foot elevation for the first floor. There were bulk calculations submitted. There is an increase in bulk due to the flood plain.
Septic system was?
Photos were submitted to show that it does still fit within the area. Our current home is served by a one-inch service from a two-inch main. Existing meter is inside the house.
No increase in bedroom beyond three?
Was included, no opposition at the hearing?
No opposition.
Hate to get too technical about that letter. I'm not sure if it was a letter in support or a letter of no opposition.
There's no objections to the plans in the project. So, how are you on the word?
Distinction.
If I was the applicant, I'd go on the high side. Yeah, that.
My sticky note says letter of support.
All right, so we'll call it support, then. All right, conditions?
And then we did two, we added beside 3C, we added 240-216, right?
You did, yep.
All sections. So, four conditions, properties that three bedrooms, properties to remain a three-bedroom. Regarding the water, the water meter must be pulled, the water off, and the service cut and capped prior to demolition.
We still doing height certs at framing for mean grade?
We usually do that, this is third, we usually do it a bit closer, but.
39.
The grade falls off quite a bit, so depending on where you pick mean grade to be.
Right. Do we do it for the sake of being consistent with these projects?
Just because there's such a drastic grade change.
Yeah.
So, we can, so we can do it.
Unless mean grade was identified on the plan, you got to get it somewhere.
We can do a height certed frame. Also submitted to the concom order of conditions, including erosion and sediment controls.
Did you say the Board of Health has approved it? We haven't received the documentation.
They've just approved it, we put it, the findings, that they've just approved the conditions relative to the future of the existing system. They'll still have to go in front of health.
So, we're going to need it before we sign off on it?
No, because he sent that, so that covers them, but they'll have to get a sign off from health.
Do you want anything about blocking water access during construction?
I mean, we could put the testimony was that the construction would probably fall, would fall within the fall period. And they should try to.
But they agreed not to block water access.
Yeah, so, not to impede water access. We could put the normal hours we use. So, subsection 991, a fixing of legible numbers required time limit for compliance with the house number.
No additional structures without permit coming?
Yeah.
Anything else for conditions?
Include the concoms, erosion, and flood control?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, James. Anything else?
And I know it's concom order of conditions. And I know it's Concom order of conditions, and we put it in the findings anyways. Do we also have to repeat the last revision date in the condition or no? They're adding that in for us now, I think, just to make sure the plans match, which is kind of nice. That's all I got.
All right. All right, so if that does it, that was a motion to approve with-
Oh, just also put in there that due to floodplain, basement is unfinished and will not have any habitable space.
Good catch. That's as a condition?
Well, yeah, we put in a finding, a muzzle. I can't hear it.
Back it up with a finding, too. All right, so now are we good?
Yeah.
All right, so that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Bob, second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is unanimously. Thank you, Attorney Moynihan.
Thank you.
All right, up next we have application ninety-one dash twenty-one, Alfin, trustees, one nineteen Childs River Road, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to raise and reconstruct the existing nonconforming single-family dwelling, increasing lot coverage by structures.
So application number ninety-one dash twenty-one, Paul F. and Annette C. Alfin, trustees, nine Bootwell Hill Road, Westford, Mass. Applied to zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty-three C and two forty-sixty-nine E, code of Falmouth, to raise and reconstruct the existing nonconforming single-family dwelling, increasing lot coverage by structures on subject property known as one nineteen Childs River Road, East Falmouth, Mass. Referrals. I think some of this will be updated, but Concom at that time said their notice of intent had been filed for the above referenced property and was scheduled to be heard November tenth. From engineering, the application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Childs River Road is a private right of way in this area. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property of butters or public rights of way. Dry wells are proposed for the roof. We do recommend adding subsection ninety-nine-one, affixing of legible numbers required time limit for compliance. Whereupon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address. Where the project falls in the Jurisdiction of Conservation Commission, we defer to Conservation Commission for water management and erosion controls. I'm from the Health Department. The study meets the definition of a bedroom, and I would consider this to be a proposed four-bedroom home. Proposed septic is for three. Applicant could mitigate by removing the privacy from the study or propose a four-bedroom septic design. However, there's not a lot of room for the three-bedroom proposed system. It may not be possible to have a four-bedroom system. Additionally, health has not reviewed or permitted the proposed septic shown on the plans. That was from November fifth. From assessors, includes lots one sixty-one and one sixty-two. Fire department has no issues with the project as drawn. From water, the water main and service are on the plans. The existing home is a one-inch service from an eight-inch main in Childs River Road. The new home will have to install the water meter inside and not in a pit. Parking board has no comments. Didn't we have conservation for this? We'll find out.
Before I begin, was there a follow-up email from Scott McGann? Because I know he had-
I thought I-
I know he had emailed myself and Ashley just saying we have revised the plans. I'll get into that in my presentation.
No, it might be under your letter. It is revised. Oh, here's your letter. Yeah, the revised was than you have, so this is from November twelfth. Kevin Clower from Scott McGann, the case opening shown in the attached plan will eliminate the study as meeting the definition of a bedroom. The attached plan now shows three bedrooms. And we were included in the mail, and you did revise the floor plans. In November twelve, twenty-twenty-one. Four pages, one full-size copy you dropped off. That's to update the bedroom count. Yep.
Great. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure that was part of the file.
Attorney Clower will be appointing jury, so you have all five members and-
Wonderful. Good evening. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Ahmet Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I'm representing the applicants, Paul and Annette Alfin, the owners of one nineteen Childs River Road. I'm joined by Mr. Alfin this evening. The engineering for this project was done by Tom Bunker of BSS Design as well. The applicants are here tonight seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming dwelling at this property. Turns out, one nineteen Childs River Road is not just a catchy name. This is located on the eastern bank of Childs River in McQuaid. The lot is ninety-eight hundred square feet of upland. It's in the residential C zoning district, and surprisingly, it is not located in the flood zone. The dwelling itself is. Presently, there's a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling and shed with a total footprint of two thousand three hundred and forty-five square feet. It is nonconforming in a number of aspects. The setback to the three-foot contour of Childs River is nonconforming, being thirty-one feet, where fifty is required. There is an accessory structure, a shed, located in the front yard of the dwelling. That's only twenty-one point four feet from the road, where it's supposed to be at least fifty, and even then, only by special permit, which it is not. And the lot coverage by structure is at twenty-three point nine three percent, where twenty is allowed by right and up to twenty-five by special permit. The Alfins purchased this property twenty-seven years ago, and over that time, have made a number of improvements to it. The original house was an uninsulated summer home. It's built on cinder block foundation with a dirt crawl space. The only portion of the house on an actual foundation is the kitchen addition, which was done in the mid nineteen seventies. The septic system was replaced by the Alfins in nineteen ninety-six, and they've made a number of upgrades, including a new heating system, windows and doors, and mass save energy upgrades. However, they are limited as to what they can do due to the poor condition of the cinder block foundation and the lack of insulation in the home. Further, there's a pretty poor design. The master bedrooms can only be entered through another bedroom. The laundry can only be accessed via the bulkhead. So they've been using this property as a second home for the last thirty years or so, and they're beginning to plan their next steps and are looking to retire here in Falmouth. They want to make this a livable year-round residence. But in order to do so, that requires significant upgrades. Realistically, it means tearing it down and starting over. So they're here tonight proposing to raise the existing dwelling in the shed and to rebuild a new three-bedroom home, including a new Title V system for three bedrooms. The proposed home will incorporate a garage, which will reduce congestion on the lot. The footprint of the structure will be slightly larger. It's by ninety-four square feet. That'll result in lot coverage by structure of twenty-four point eight-nine percent. The ridge height of the proposed dwelling is twenty-five feet, nine inches. The nonconforming rear yard setback will be improved slightly, going from thirty-one feet to thirty-three feet. The nonconforming accessory structure in the front yard will be removed and eliminated, and with the issuance of a special permit under two forty-sixty-nine E, the lot coverage by structure will no longer be a nonconformity. Otherwise, this project will comply with side yard and front yard setbacks, as well as lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking, which will be thirty-seven point two-three percent below the forty allowed by right. The number of bedrooms will remain the same. We did submit revised plans in order to address the doorway of the study, specifically to address the concerns of Health Agent Scott McGann, which was acknowledged in his updated referral. And there is a new three-bedroom Title V system. A notice of intent has been filed with the Conservation Commission. The hearing was opened on November tenth. It went well. The project was well-received. There was no issue with the building plans. There were some questions over specific plantings, which the landscape architect is working on with conservation staff. We are scheduled to go back before them on December eighth. Really, it's just a matter of what plantings they're doing in terms of mitigation, so we're not expecting much in the way of surprises. This home, the proposed home's been designed with single-story living in mind. It is what the applicant has called a universal design. It's safe and accessible for everyone, regardless of age, physical ability, or stature. There's wider doors and hallways, which are designed to accommodate wheelchairs, and those wider doors and hallways have contributed to a slightly larger footprint. Under two forty-three C of our bylaw, pre-existing nonconforming structures may be changed by special permit, provided that they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. The board is asked to consider the standards of two forty dash two sixteen and whether or not the alteration of the structure creates any new dimensional nonconformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. In this case, there's no new nonconformity created. The existing nonconformities are either improved or eliminated. Again, as I said, the rear yard setback is improved from thirty-one to thirty-three. The only reason it couldn't be improved further is due to the front yard setback, as well as setbacks for the septic design. The nonconforming accessory structure is removed and eliminated, and the lot coverage by structure will be eliminated as a nonconformity. The proposal does not impair views and vistas, and it does fit with the neighborhood. Which brings me to two forty-sixty-nine E, which allows for lot coverage by structure in excess of twenty percent. And in granting that, the board is asked to consider the size and height of the proposed structure in relation to the size and height of structures in the neighborhood, the effect of shadow on adjacent properties, the impacts on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. We did submit a lot comparison worksheet. It's clear that the proposal is well within the parameters of the neighborhood. There's a number of larger homes, both in terms of footprint and gross building area. There's no impact to views and vistas. Though the house is slightly larger, it's in an area with many similarly sized homes. And there's no effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments as the septic system's designed for the proposed number of bedrooms, and it's the same number of bedrooms as at present. For all the reasons I've reviewed, this project as proposed is a significant improvement over what exists for the owners in allowing them to utilize this as their full-time residence, and the proposal's certainly within the scope of the bylaw. This will not create any new dimension of nonconformities, will improve existing nonconforming setbacks, eliminate nonconforming accessory structure and lot coverage, and it meets the requirements of two forty-three C, two forty-sixty-nine E, and two forty-two sixteen. I believe that this board can and should grant the special permit, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. Mr. Board questions? Jury, anything?
No questions.
James?
No questions. Thank you.
Scott?
Attorney Clower, on the notes on the-
You're going to ask me septic questions, aren't you, Scott?
No, not at all. But on the notes, under section three, there is a list of one of them is endangered species habitat, and I look up to the legend for the site plan, and I can't find it. Can you speak to where that takes place?
I'm looking at, oh, under notes here, locusts is not within, not within an endangered species habitat.
Oh, so all of them?
Yeah, so it's not within riverfront areas, zone two, public waterway.
My mistake. Thank you.
Nope.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. Bob, anything?
No, there's no, as far as the basement, it's just the walkover door, right? There's no windows or anything.
I'll take mine off.
I do have one question, but it has nothing to do with this house. Do you have any idea what that tower is next door? Is that just for looking at birds and stuff, or? For everyone that's been out there, it's really kind of cool, so that's why.
My name is Paul Alfin. The house next door apparently was constructed before we got there by a local builder who apparently had a reputation. He had a helicopter. The helicopter could land on the water. The helicopter was yellow. It was in Jaws. He built that so you could go up there and get the view. I've been up there once. You can't go up there anymore because it's kind of shaky, but it was for a view. And maybe he could feel like he was in his helicopter when he wasn't in the helicopter.
Yeah, it is kind of cool. It looks like a fire tower.
All right. Anything else from the board? All right. Do have to turn it over to public comment. Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project? I'm sure the applicant himself was in favor of it.
Can I stick in favor?
Sure, yeah, if you want to.
I should note that Mr. Alfin is a zoning attorney in his own right, so thank you for not embarrassing me in front of him. I appreciate it, so.
I think you did a great job. The, I want to let you know that I sent notice to all of our butters from Ferry Road down to the end of our end of Childs River Road, asking anyone in the neighborhood to get ahold of us if they had any questions or concerns, and the only feedback we got was positive.
All right. And that was yourself doing it, because I'm sure as a zoning attorney, you know, different municipalities do different rules, but so you went out on yourself and sent it out?
I gave them a set of the plans and a narrative description of what we were doing.
Fantastic. Thank you. All right. Anything else from the board?
No.
Is there a motion?
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion to close made by James, second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
This is unanimously. Hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken.
Motion approved with conditions?
Second. Sorry.
Go, go.
Thank you, Bob. I'll give that one to James. Findings?
Two forty-three C, two forty-sixty-nine E, two forty-two sixteen, not substantially more detrimental. Items. Property is in it probably is not, it's not in a flood zone, correct?
The front of the property is, but the house itself is not.
Yeah, so just put that the house itself is not in a flood zone. Provisions we made to the plan to add a four-foot case opening in the study, which eliminates that use as a bedroom. Definition as a bedroom, so the property will have three bedrooms. A letter was also sent by the Health Agent regarding that. Current nonconformities, you have a thirty-one point four to the three-foot elevation of waters to Vineyard Sound, where fifty is required. You have an accessory structure located in the front yard. You have lot coverage by structures at twenty-three point nine three. Front yard, twenty-one point four. They're going to be eliminating the accessory structure in the front yard, the front yard setback, and then they're going to improve the distance to the three-foot elevation from thirty-one, four to thirty-three feet. Going to be installing a new Title V septic system for three bedrooms. You get a ridge height at twenty-five point nine. It includes lots sixty-one and sixty-two. They did apply for notice intent with conservation. They have not had the results to that, but they don't expect any issues except for some mitigation plantings they're working out.
Applicant stated on the testimony that he reached out to all, privately to all of his butters with a plan and-
Which is nice.
And no opposition.
And the first time I've ever heard that, so that was a plus.
Anything else for findings?
No, just let me check the-
Testimony of the slight increase in the size is to accommodate one-floor living and accommodating wheelchairs. Compelling reason.
I just put that it's RSC zone land.
It's an upgrade to the, it was testimony, the foundation as well. That was part of the reason why the-
Could also put that they eliminated the, in that case, they eliminated a fourth bedroom because they're not sure if there's enough room in the site to actually add a four-bedroom subject system.
All right. Anything else for findings? Conditions?
So per plans, the home will have to install the water meter inside and not in a pit. Subsection ninety-nine-one, affixing of legible numbers time limit for compliance. Property to remain a three-bedroom.
Downspout drainage, did we have that in the findings?
What?
Downspout drainage.
Actually, no, so what do we do? We just, do we place in here that conservation will? Because engineers are not doing any comments because like they always do with conservation, so I don't want to just say that it's automatic.
Yeah, so I guess what you could do is have them abide by any conservation-
So right there, didn't it, besides that, they have to abide by any conservation requirements, including the resulting conditions from conservation on them?
They're on the plan.
Yeah, they're on the plan, right?
Yeah, but I don't know if conservation is changing anything, so I don't know. We can say there are some on the plans, but it's going to be subject to conservation.
Anything else for conditions?
Hours?
Did you put, obviously need a septic tank approval.
Put no habitable space in the basement. The accessory structure in the front yard is to be removed and not replaced.
Space is a little tight. I'm not sure about keeping everything on site, at least.
I don't think you can.
Right now, so maybe just work with the police department if
How about use-
Access to Childs River becomes an issue?
Using the safety practice. Using the safety practices to whatever you want to...it is what it is.
Yeah.
Because you're not piling anything out back.
Should we put the limited work order needs to be in? Conservation will add that in, right? So it's to note in the plan, and maybe we could put that if...any changes to the plan made by conservation have to be submitted to the zoning board?
That's fine.
Just so we make sure we have the same plans.
If you put that in the conditions, we won't jam them up, right?
No, it won't. We'll just say that any conservation plans will have to be submitted to zoning boards in order to the same revisions.
Anything else for conditions?
Thank you.
I think that's it.
All right, so if that was it, motion was made by Bob and seconded by James to approve the project with conditions. All those in favor?
Aye.
House is unanimously. Thank you, Attorney Clower.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, this was fun.
Not for us.
I'd like to watch paint dry.
You can come again.
Very quickly, if I may, on a personal note, I wanted to say thank you to the board and to the staff for the really lovely card. I very appreciate it.
Sorry if we lost you.
All right, that takes care of our new hearings. Onto our open meeting items. Up first, we do have voting in minutes for October 7, 2021, and October 21, 2021.
Tabling both?
Tabling both. All right, tabling both of those. Up next, we have request for an insubstantial change, comprehensive permit number 55-20, RLBELLC, Rebecca Ann Lane, Lot 2, in East Fowlworth.
Do we have anything?
Do we...yeah, there was...I'm pulling up my email.
Try to get to the...
Ashley had sent out an email.
Just the email, yeah?
Yeah, November 16.
It's what? That's the housing trust one. Oh, that is it on...
These are all points either housing.
Oh, okay, I was confusing that with the housing trust.
Looks like you have sort of presentation.
Nick Marioni for the applicant.
We're just getting ourselves settled here.
We're requesting insubstantial change to the comprehensive permit for Cardinal Place. We're looking for some corrections to some of the findings and the conditions. Most of them are just administrative corrections. We can go through them when time comes. The big thing we're looking for is to change the buildings without changing the footprint except to take the basements out. We're looking to slab buildings on four of the five buildings. So the footprint change would be...bulkheads would be gone. And we're also looking to add a shed. Do you want to go through them?
It's a bit easier to go through.
Yeah, why not? Sure. So number one, the procedural history states that the public hearing was closed on June 3rd. It was in fact closed on June 10th. I just think that's important that we correct that. Last bullet in this section titled "Plans Submitted by the Applicant and Applicant's Representative" on page 4 are the landscape plans. The decision refers to the drawings submitted as dated September 17, 2020. The actual final drawings we submitted were dated April 21, 2021. So those...I would like those put in the decision. Finding number 28 does not list the July 29 meeting. I don't know if that's relevant or not, but... The decision under the findings suggests that all door openings are two foot eight. In fact, only the bedroom and bathroom doors are two foot eight.
And the front doors are three feet, correct?
Yes, but obviously the closet doors and other doors are not two-eight. Finding 24 refers to a proposed dumpster. There was no dumpster on the final plan that was submitted and approved. There was one on an earlier version of it, but not on the final one. Finding six and seven go to finances on the project. Six states that the rents are limited to 30% of the resident's income. That's incorrect. The rents are 80% AMI, and the residents can pay up to 35% to 40% of their income towards the rent, and that's approved by the project sponsor, which is us. Page 7 incorrectly states that the one-bedroom rent is $123 a month, less $150 for utilities. It's plus $150 for utilities. And the two-bedrooms, $1471, less $176 for utilities, it's plus $176 for utilities. In condition one...
Those are the market rents, correct?
No, those are the affordable rents. Number eight, in condition one, the third bullet points out the architectural plans were incorrectly numbered and titled. We've made the corrections to that and at the same time added more detailed sheets, numbered and labeled them all correctly, and made some revisions to the plan that we're asking the board to accept. One is we've deleted the basements and the bulkheads on buildings 1 to 4. We've eliminated laundry rooms and made them a pantry, and we've added a pull-down staircase because we're gonna be putting the utilities in the attic instead of the basement. Condition 14 prohibits accessory structures and sheds. We'd like to include a 12-by-16 maintenance shed for the owner's use, and I show the proposed area for it that I'd like the board to consider. The areas are red. There's two proposed areas for the shed. One is up front, and the other one is back here. Either one can be accessed from the adjacent property, which is family-owned by the same as the applicant. And the red shows the bulkheads being taken out. So those are the proposed locations for the shed, and those are the changes to the site plan. Number 10, I speak about the requirement...required for the board to approve the lottery agent. We selected Hack, and last week I got a call from Hack asking us if we could find somebody else. They're just so busy, they can't get our marketing plan started. So I've contacted someone else, and I'm gonna ask that you do not approve Hack as our lottery agent at this time. But following that request along, it says the condition says you approve the final lottery agent, and Mass Housing approves the plan, and you provided a copy, but you don't approve the plan. We had to make that correction in a previous permit also.
Nick, is there documentation for that, that they requested you get somebody else that in the front?
Just a phone conversation I had with Gail Callahan, that's all. She even gave me the name of the person to contact, so...but she said if I couldn't get someone, she would do it, but she'd prefer we get someone else because they're so busy. And Mass Housing has already designated Neighborhood Works as the monitoring agent, and they're preparing the four-month monitoring service agreement now, which we'll have soon. So we're requesting that the board be...just request the substantial change, insubstantial change, and modify the permit accordingly.
All right. Turn it over to board questions, see if there are any. Jerry, do you have any questions?
What led to eliminating the basement, and will that lead to less storage for the tenants?
I'm sure it will lead to less storage for the tenants. What led to it was a few things. One is costs. Material costs are just...all materials, not just lumber, all materials, appliance costs, everything is just so high in order to try and bring things in line. That's probably the primary driver. But there's also a benefit to it that seems to address concerns that have been brought up repeatedly by this board and others, and that is that... This is a typical front entry. You have a seven-and-a-half-inch step. We've been asked to provide handicap-accessible units. But going with slab construction, this is what the front entry looks like. We could just put a threshold ramp here, and every one of those eight units with the slab basements, slab foundations essentially has handicap access, wheelchair access. So it's just a side benefit.
You can do that either way with a basement or that by adjusting the sill height there.
Well, when you have the...when you have the full basement, it's not as easy because you have a seven-and-a-half-inch riser there. We go from seven-and-a-half to nowhere.
You can't step the foundation down through the threshold?
You could, but that's another expense.
It's what? Okay.
Yeah, no, it's just to drop the foundation down, like that's another expense. It's just a benefit. We want to eliminate the foundations, and this is just one of the side benefits.
The other question is if they don't have a laundry room, where do they put washer and dryer?
They go to the laundromat, I guess.
So you're eliminating...so they have to go...that your answer?
Well, we...I think the plumbing code requires us to put a connection in. Washer...washing machine connection. Experience is telling us that putting the washers and dryers in the unit leads to abuse in water, which we have to pay for. And it's just another expense we don't want to incur.
Okay, thank you.
Scott, did you have...
I find myself agreeing with Jerry about when you're eliminating basements, you take away a place for the washer and dryer in the event that they wanted to do that. And I'm not a big fan of getting something approved and then cutting costs after the fact and blaming it on costs. We approve these the way we approve them. I'm not in favor of this particular aspect of...I don't find that de minimis. I think it's a...it's a hassle for people, especially...you're proposing wheelchair access to some apartments, but then making them go to the laundromat. I mean, it just...that part of it doesn't work for me. Some of it does, some of it doesn't, but...
Just to address that one thing, laundry wouldn't have been in the basement anyway because they...
But it couldn't.
Well, we wouldn't have put them in there. We wouldn't put the washer and dryer access there because they have to go outside to get to the basement.
So piggybacking off Jerry's question, if you're required to put a hookup in, but put no place for a washer and dryer, where would you put that hookup that you're required to put in?
We'd put it in the pantry. The room is still there, we just converted it to a pantry instead of a laundry room. I'll show you.
Wash your clothes in the pantry?
No, you wouldn't wash your clothes in the pantry, you wouldn't.
Although you do...so it's not a pantry, it's a laundry room now.
Could they put a washer and dryer?
You can't have it both ways.
They couldn't put a dryer in there because we're not putting the dryer plug and we're not putting the dryer vent in.
I appreciate it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Bob?
So on the shed that you're proposing for storage, that would be only for use for the owner for what he needs for this property and not other properties?
For other properties he owns, yes.
So this isn't for use just for this property? This is just a general use for the owner for other properties that he has?
Yes, you know he owns a property right diagonally across the street from this.
I didn't, I was just wondering. Usually when we see a utility shed for maintenance of a property, it's basically for maintenance of the use of the property that it's on versus other uses.
Primarily it's for use on that property, but he would store paints for all his properties there. He would store screens.
So I have...I've got the same issues regarding the laundry. You know, State Law Massachusetts requires the landlords to pay for the water.
Right.
It seems like a go-around, just so you don't have to pay water costs since the rentals are paying the other utilities. If you have to put a hookup in, you're basically doing it just to meet code, but you're not doing it to actually have a washer. How close is the nearest laundromat to this location?
It's...I think it's up across from the Dunkin' Donuts.
Do you know how many miles that is at all?
Couple miles, yeah.
As far as the other requests regarding the specifics on, you know, changes regarding plans, I guess I would refer that to the zoning administrator, just to make sure that you checked, to make sure that those are actual changes. So regarding the one on the lottery agent, so to the administrator, so we had written in here that the board gets approval, so basically you get the information from the lottery agent. Wouldn't that still apply? I mean, we didn't specifically name Hack, so I don't understand what that change is.
Right, so you'll have to get a new contract, or...
But do we need to change that at all? I mean, we're required...they give us...
Yeah, I don't think you need to name who it is, but you will need a copy of the contract for whoever is going to do it.
And we're not specifically naming them now, correct? In the decision we have?
I don't think we did.
So I don't even know if there needs to be a change on item 10. I would say regarding the shed, you know, this is for a specific rental, affordable rental complex, and it makes no sense to me that we would be putting a structure on this property. It would be used for other properties, not this one. So if the board was interested in doing a shed there, I would be more interested that the use of that shed be only for this property for maintenance and not for other properties. If it can be used for other properties, it can be used for other properties that aren't even affordable properties.
Are we voting that these are de minimis or not?
Yeah, I think that's the question.
Yeah.
We're getting in the weeds here with this. We're either voting either they are or they're not, right?
So I guess if...
You can't rewrite the...
So then I would say that the laundry room is not de minimis. I would say that the shed, because of the current use that was explained, is not de And I don't know if there needs to be any change at all on item number 10.
I would add the basement, to me, is not eliminating, it's not de minimis.
Then we have...
Substantial change.
So we have three or four that are substantial change.
I mean, that's what we're here to do, is vote.
All right. So it's a difference of insubstantial versus substantial, and we're getting in the weeds here about...
Right. We're gonna do that line by line? I mean, item by item, we vote them individually, ignoring?
I don't think you need to. I think you can look at it collectively.
So we could just say collectively?
Unless you want to select items.
I mean, I think there's some items that are typographical administrative. I mean, there are other items that are gonna have to come if we...insubstantially, they're gonna have to come back for a hearing.
So are you actually allowed to choose items? Or are you just voted as a whole that we find that these changes could be substantial?
I mean, I suppose you could just keep it as a package and do everything together.
Would have a chair.
If I could make a point on...
Yeah.
Jerry, I think you termed it the administrative things. Mr. Marioni, you know, the majority of things that you're requesting here tonight, a lot of them seem to be typographical things, whether it was Scribner's error or, you know, just some errors with the findings and conditions. I mean, through the process, you, as the applicant's representative, you receive drafts of the decisions prior to us voting, right?
We received it about three hours prior to the voting, and I spent an hour and a half of that driving.
Okay. Just not sure exactly when you received it, but if... Just not, not sure exactly when you received it, but if, if you received it, you know, with some time before that, I mean, at least there could have been a chance to review and work collaboratively identifying a lot of these issues here, right?
If we had enough time to review, we would have been able to do that, yes.
Sure, all right. All right. I mean, as, as for everything else, I mean, it's, kind of get, like you said, Scott, we were kind of getting into the weeds here about picking everything out here, but the, the purpose, purpose of this hearing is to vote on whether they're insubstantial or substantial. I mean, if, if we, if we vote that they are not insubstantial changes, then that would trigger a public hearing and we would have to go through everything, so...
Pick a foundation on a house is a substantial change or the deletion of one.
Have these already built? Sorry? These already built?
No.
There's been progress made on the site, but they're not built yet.
So, could we, could, could we do a finding or a vote due to the following items? We consider this a substantial change.
I would say, yeah.
Because it was presented in a package with, with clerical errors and it was presented as one, then it, I think it has to be voted as one package.
Yes, I would say so. I don't think we can really cherry pick here.
Excuse me, may I, may I just say, first of all, Mass Housing did send a letter to you through the board that they deemed the changes insubstantial, just for the record.
Did we get that?
They, they, you can, and you, you have in the past deemed some of these things to be insubstantial, some requests as part of a whole package, and others to be substantial. So, you can split it.
Do we have that one in the file?
I, I have it in the file. So, again, I guess to the administrator, what, what is the proper process to make an insubstantial or substantial argument on this? Do we do it just because it's a whole? And if we do find it substantial, we automatically would schedule a public hearing, correct?
Correct.
And that would also give them time to correct the...
Then we could handle everything at once.
That's exactly right.
So, I think the... So, then I would make a motion that...
There was one issue with the property. We were advised by the site inspector that the site was cleared prior to approval of soil erosion and sediment controls being installed.
Was there any actions taken beyond that by the town?
No.
No?
Even more reason to address that through the public hearing process, right?
Yeah.
So, if this goes to public hearing process, because this is substantial, we can bring all the other issues up at that time, correct?
That's right.
Well, the vote would really be denying the request for an insubstantial change and that would...
Trigger.
Trigger. That essentially makes it substantial change and that would trigger the public hearing process. Take us through, through Noreen, right? Am I, am I right? Okay.
What's the motion, Bob?
Then I'd make a motion that through the request submitted, we deny this as an insubstantial change and we go forward with scheduling a hearing, public hearing.
Would anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
All right, motion was made by Bob, seconded by Scott, who denied the request for an insubstantial change. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously.
Do we need to...
So, you're denying that the hearing date that you closed, it was not the 10th, it was in fact the 3rd, that's what you're doing?
No, we're handling this as a package. We're saying you submitted a total package and review of the package, we're finding that we cannot vote this package as a whole as an insubstantial change, so that we are requesting a hearing. And then at that hearing, when we go over the items, you make the same arguments you made tonight, and then we can vote on whatever the thing is, but we'll have to have a public hearing.
Could maybe save a lot of time if you just pick the ones you don't like and we just say, all right, we'll live with it and approve the ones that, that we have to fight for, like the...
You've submitted, you've submitted a package tonight and you've submitted what your arguments will be, they may be the same arguments you have at the, at the hearing. But at that time, it's a public hearing, we can go over it and...
And the board voted collectively on how to handle that in that venue?
Yeah, I heard it, I'm sorry. You didn't give us any chance for comment on it, but...
You will, at the public hearing.
That's why it's getting opened up into a comment, so we can have testimony back and forth.
I don't think anybody's arguing on the administrative changes.
I just think there's...
Some of those things are administrative. What's closed, not signed.
You're all set? Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Marioni. All right, up next we have reviewing the draft decision with a vote anticipated for application 69-21, Falmouth Housing Corporation, Affirmative Investments, Inc., 24 Scranton Ave. and 763 Main Street in Falmouth.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, I have a conflict in this matter and I'll be stepping out, recusing myself.
Thank you, James.
Ian voting members on this are Terrance Hary, Scott Zalinski, myself, and Jerry Tatters.
Thank you, Bob.
So, when, in reviewing this, we normally go through the findings and then the conditions?
We sure do.
And then vote each condition as we go through it?
Yes.
So, I'll do some speed reading for the findings.
Yeah, just for the board's information, for the minor changes that were made post the copy that you received, I've put that in bold so that you can see where I've made changes.
Thank you for clarifying, Noreen. And then for the record, I should just say that the hearing was closed on the previous hearing night, so, hearing is closed, no testimony is being taken tonight. Board is reviewing the draft decision and have voted anticipated on what we discussed tonight.
All right, so let's start with the findings. Number one, according to last published subsidized housing inventory, SHI, by the Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, dated December 21st, 2020, the town of Falmouth has 7.2% affordable housing. The town does not satisfy the statutory and regulatory exemption thresholds outlined in Master and Law's Chapter 40B and 780 CMR 56. Two, the December 2018 Housing Production Plan, HPP, for the town of Falmouth identified the need for affordable housing and referenced the substantial gap between the cost of housing and what residents can afford. The HPP established a production goal of 256 affordable units over the next five years, emphasizing that the affordable housing shortage threatens the character and viability of the community and labeling it a crisis. The HPP documented a community demographic shift to greater number of older residents and reported on the need for appropriately sized units for smaller households, preferably offered at tiered income levels. Three, the subject site, 763 Main Street and 24 Scranton Ave., which is the premises, comprises two abutting parcels located at the corner of Main Street and Scranton Ave., generally proximate to the downtown area. The Main Street parcel is located within the Business Redevelopment Zoning District and the Scranton Ave. parcel is primarily located within Business 2, which is the B2 Zoning District, with a sliver of land within the BR Zoning District, Business Redevelopment. Premises is sighted in the Falmouth Inner Harbor Coastal Pond Overlay District, with a portion sighted in the flood zone X and AE 13. The parcel on Main Street, Lot 22, comprises 29,429 square feet of area. Parcel on Scranton Ave. lots 2 and 23 comprises 49,152 square feet of area. Together, the lots comprise 78,581 square feet of area. The Business Redevelopment Zoning District requires minimum lot width of 125 feet for new lots, Section 240-240H2. The Business 2 B2 Zoning District requires a minimum lot width of 200 feet for new lots. The proposed lot width for the subject site is 195 feet. Subject site is partially located in the BR Zoning District and partially located in the B2 Zoning District. A waiver of Section 24067A of the zoning bylaw is requested for B2 zoning district portions for the new lot created. Four, the premises approximate the affordable housing development at 704 Main Street, where staff and maintenance for this proposed development are housed. It was also proposed to be an onsite position at Main and Scranton to assist residents. The premises is also across the street from the senior center, proximate to the police station, retail stores, and accessible to public transportation. The location is pedestrian friendly, reducing the need for personal vehicles. Five, the applicant has prior successful experience developing and operating a mixed-use building at 704 Main Street in Falmouth. Six, the premises also contains an isolated coastal bank in the southeast area of the lot, which is subject to review by the Conservation Commission under the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act. Existing concrete walls proximate to the coastal bank are reportedly in poor condition and are proposed to be reconstructed. Per the applicant, the coastal bank exists due to retaining walls and the outdoor swimming pool of the former motel, which has been removed, and associated land alterations. A waiver from certain provisions of the Falmouth Wetlands Regulation has been requested. Seven, there will be a gravel access towards the wetland area to provide for compliance with the Massachusetts Stormwater Standard inspections. Eight, three curb cuts are being eliminated as part of the redevelopment of the premises. The zoning board allows one curb cut per lot with the Main Street frontage in the BR Zoning District. However, this provision of the zoning bylaw does permit exemptions, exceptions for a project if two curb cuts are necessary to access parking facilities or to reduce traffic impacts on a site. The project site currently contains and expects to maintain two curb cuts, one at Main Street and one on Scranton Ave. The zoning board of appeals will act in the stead of the planning board regarding curb cuts. A waiver from this provision of the zoning bylaw has been requested for the new lot created. The town has been reviewing traffic mitigation measures in the general area of the premises and intends to work cooperatively with the applicant to make area improvements. Nine, the applicant stated they are having a 21E assessment conducted to verify the assertion that there is no hazardous materials on the premises. Ten, the 763 Main Street parcel has approximately 112 feet of frontage on Main Street, the northwesterly side, and approximately 193.91 feet of frontage on Scranton Ave., the westerly side. The 24 Scranton Ave. parcel has 55.52 feet of frontage on Scranton Ave., which is the westerly side. Eleven, the applicant has met the requirements for filing for a comprehensive permit demonstrating they will qualify as a limited dividend organization per the regulatory agreement with DHCD. Site control is via purchase and sale agreement as amended and executed January 29, 2021, and DHCD issued its project eligibility letter on June 30, 2021. Twelve, the applicant provided that the federal LIHDC program will be the subsidiary, will be the subsidy program. Thirteen, the premises is currently improved by a bank building. There was formerly a motel on the Scranton Ave. parcel. Fourteen, the redevelopment of the premises will include a total of 48 units, including 47 one-bedroom units plus one studio unit. Four of the units will be handicap accessible. There will also be 2,402 square feet of retail space on the ground level. The provision of commercial space matches the design use in the zoning district per the bylaw, MGL, Chapter 40B, allows the zoning board of appeals to stand in stead of the planning board for site plan review, including for a new development on the lot that would add 1,000 square feet or more of gross floor area, or which would, under Section 240-108, Table of Minimum Parking Requirements, require a total of five or more parking spaces based on both existing and new development. A waiver from the site plan review by the planning board has been requested. The zoning bylaw requires a special permit from the zoning board of appeals for multifamily dwellings in the B2 zoning district at a density of six units per acre and up to eight units per acre in the BR zoning district. Proposed density for the project site is 26.61 units per acre over the 1.8 acre, 78,581 square foot site. Master and Law's 40B allows the override of local density. A waiver of this provision of the zoning bylaw has been requested. Fifteen, 12 units will be offered to those with income at 30% of the area median income, AMI. Six units will be offered to those with income at 50% of the AMI. And 30 units will be offered to those with income at 60% of the AMI. All utilities will be included in the rent for the units restricted to age 62-plus. The proposal greatly exceeds the state's minimum requirement under Master and Law's Chapter 40B that 20% of the units created be offered affordably, by offering 100% of the units to be restricted as affordable. These units fulfill an identified need in the town's housing production plan, HPP, as well as the applicant's documented waiting list in excess of 200 households seeking age-restricted affordable units. Sixteen, the town is in strong support of the proposal, as referenced in the letter from the town manager, and financial support voted by the select board. Seventeen, per the requirements of the bylaw, the parking requirements for the premises would be 1.5 parking spaces for each one-bedroom unit and one space for each 200 square feet of retail space. This would result in 72 required spaces for the residential units, plus 13 required spaces for the commercial component, totaling 85 spaces. The applicant proposes 30 parking spaces for the residential units and 13 spaces for the commercial retail space totaling 43 spaces. A waiver from the Section 240-108 is requested for 42 parking residential spaces not provided. The zoning board, the zoning bylaw also provides that the zoning board may authorize parking reductions. Eighteen, the parking lot is designed with parking spaces up to the next building at the rear of the structure, complying with the town's design preference that parking behind buildings in the Business Redevelopment and B2 zoning districts. Parking will include handicap spaces and loading zone to serve both residential units and commercial/retail space. Nineteen, the new building was designed to fit the context and architectural elements of the area. Design materials and colors are utilized to break up the bulk of the building. Twenty, the gross square footage of the building would be 47,134 square feet, with 2,402 square feet reserved for commercial space. The residential units are planned to comprise between 608 and 700 square feet of area each. The zoning bylaw requires a special permit from the planning board for any new mixed-use construction, with a proposed gross floor area of 10,000 square feet or more. The zoning board of appeals will act instead of the planning board. A waiver of this provision of the zoning bylaw has been requested. Twenty-one, lot coverage by structures, parking and paving will be 54.6%. The BR zoning district limits lot coverage by structures, pavement and parking at 60%, which is Section 240-240H3. The B2 zoning district limits a maximum lot coverage by structures, pavement and parking at 70%, which is Section 240-69. The proposed lot coverage for structures, pavement and parking is 54.6% over the entire site, 40.7% in B2 zoning district, and 77.8% in the BR zoning district. The proposed lot coverage over the entire site at 54.6% meets the maximum limit of coverage for structures, pavement and parking in the B2 and BR zoning districts. A waiver from this provision of the zoning bylaw is requested as to lot coverage by structures, pavement and parking located in the BR zoning district. Twenty-two, the lot coverage by structures will be 21.3%. The BR zoning district limits the maximum lot coverage to 20% for structures, Section 240-240H4. The B2 zoning district limits the maximum lot coverage to 40% for structures, Section 240-69. The proposed lot coverage for structures is 21.3% over the entire site, 11% in the B2 zoning district, and 38.5% in the BR zoning district. A waiver of this provisions of Section 240-240H4 of the zoning bylaw is requested as to lot coverage by structures located in the BR zoning district. Twenty-three, a waiver is requested for the building height due to the elevator penthouse being at 38 feet, where 35 is the maximum height per the bylaw. The minor increase in height is not expected to be visually discernible. The zoning board, the zoning bylaw also limits the maximum number of stories to two and a half stories. The proposed building comprises three stories. A waiver of this provision of the zoning bylaw has been requested. Twenty-four, the premises is sighted with an existing sewer service area. The existing flow has been calculated at 3,190 gallons per day based on the motel and bank use. The estimated wastewater flow for the apartments would be 5,464 gallons per day, and the retail use is estimated at 184 gallons per day. The increase due to the change of use exceeds 10%, requiring a variance pursuant to Section 180-55 of the town's sewer bylaw, to be issued by the zoning board of appeals as the permit granting authority. The wastewater superintendent is estimated by letter dated September 21, 2021, that this project would bring the total projected average annual flow for the wastewater system to 80.3% of the permitted average annual flow for the sewer system, and that there exists sufficient capacity within the system to provide for the proposed development with its resident, with its residential and commercial use. The select board by letter dated October 7, 2021, has provided support for the issuance of a variance under Section 180-55 for the Flow Neutral Bylaw, noting the eligibility and the fact that affordable housing is a priority for such a waiver. The zoning board of appeals finds the approval of the variance falls within the comprehensive permit. Twenty-five, the applicant has submitted a list of waiver requests for the development from the following. Section 240-67A, minimum lot width. Section 240-69 and 240-240H3, maximum lot coverage by structures and structures, pavement and parking. Section 240-69 and 240-240H4, maximum lot coverage by structures. Section 240-70 and 240-240H5, maximum building height. Section 240-70, maximum building stories. Section 240-68A2, front yard setback. Section 240-108, parking requirements. Section 240-515 and Section 240-240H3, maximum lot coverage by structures and structures, Section two forty fifty-one five and Section two forty two forty G B, multifamily units and density. Section two forty dash two forty I curb cuts. Section two forty dash two forty B one B, mixed-use construction in excess of ten thousand square feet. Section two forty dash one ninety-two, site plan review. Sewer bylaw code of Falmouth, Section one eighty dash fifty-five. Falmouth Wetlands Regulations, FWR, ten point one eight point three, ten point one eight point five, ten point one eight point ten eight. FWR, ten point three zero seven C Coastal Bank. FWR, two point one seven one Wildlife Habitat Evaluation. FWR, two point zero seven nine Depth of Drainage Forbay. Section two forty dash one oh nine E Parking Requirements. Section two forty dash ninety-nine A and Section two forty dash one thirteen C Coastal Pond Overlay District. Section two forty one sixteen and Section two forty one nineteen Landscape Design Standards. And those are all the findings? Anyone have any questions or comments on those? No? So then we'll go through each condition, and you want to just vote each one?
Do you want to vote the findings since you've finished that section?
Okay.
And then you can vote the conditions.
Sure, you can as well.
You want to call the vote for the findings?
Sure. Voting on the findings. Anyone want to make a motion?
Well, I mean, make a motion to accept the findings as presented?
Don't move.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Scott. Voting on the findings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero passes unanimously.
And now the conditions. Condition one, you can have us vote each one, Norina, or do them as a...
Yeah, that makes sense.
All right, so, so, conditions, this is under the title general. One, the construction shall be substantially shown as on the plans submitted to and reviewed by the board listed below, though subject to additional conditions separately delineated. Site plan, site layout, sheet one of eight, dated July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one, with a final revision date of October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Site plan existing conditions plan, sheet two of eight, dated July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one, with a final revision date of October seventh, twenty-twenty-one. Site plan demolition and erosion control, sheet three of eight, dated July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one, final revision date of October seventh, twenty-twenty-one. Site plan grading, drainage and utilities, sheet four of eight, dated July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one, with a final revision date of October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Site plan and profile, sheet five of eight, dated July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one, with a final revision date of October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Site plan pavement and utility construction details, sheet six of eight, dated July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one, with a final revision date of October eighteen, twenty-twenty-one. Water and sewer, sheet seven of eight, dated July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one. Site plan drainage construction details, sheet eight of eight, dated July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one, with a final revision date of October eighteen, twenty-twenty-one. Prepared for Falmouth Housing Corporation, seventy, seven sixty-three Main Street, Falmouth, Mass., is drawn by Homes and McGrath, Inc., two oh five Worcester Court, Suite A four, Falmouth, Mass. Plans are stamped and signed by Michael B. McGrath, PLS. Renderings, Scranton, Maine Senior Housing, including Scranton Ave elevation, south elevation at driveway slash east elevation of parking, north elevation at courtyard slash northeast elevation at courtyard slash Main Street elevation. In colors, prepared for Scranton, Maine Senior Housing, plans are not authored, date stamped received October thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one. New construction of Scranton, Maine Senior Housing, Falmouth, Mass., including building tabulation, sheet A zero zero two. Architectural site plan, sheet A zero zero three. Foundation plan, sheet A one zero zero. First floor plan, sheet A one oh one. Second floor plan, sheet A one oh two. Third floor plan, sheet A one oh three. Roof plan, sheet A one oh four. Exterior elevation, sheet A two hundred. Stereo elevations, sheet A two oh one. Building section, sheet A five oh one. Building section, sheet A five oh two. Prepared for Scranton, Maine Senior Housing, Falmouth, Mass., all plans dated October twelfth, twenty-twenty-one, as drawn by Davis Square Architects, two forty-eight Elm Street, Somerville, Mass. Plans are stamped and signed by Clifford Jerome Boomer, R.A.
All right, so that's condition one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Uh, condition two, forty-eight units, including forty-seven one-bedroom units and one studio unit, shall remain affordable rental units in perpetuity to households of sixty-two plus, earning no more than thirty percent of the area median income, A.M.I., for twelve units. Six units for those earning no more than fifty percent of the A.M.I., and thirty units for those earning no more than sixty percent of the A.M.I. for Barnstable County, and shall remain eligible for inclusion in the town's subsidized housing inventory, per the requirements of the State Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD. All units shall be year-round tenancy.
All right, that's condition two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Three, there shall be no additional bedrooms created within the new building, and no space may be converted to add additional bedrooms to any unit. Noncompliance with this condition shall be considered a violation of the comprehensive permit.
Condition three, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Condition four, any future transfer of the premises by the applicant shall require the prior written approval of DHCD and the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Condition four, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Five, the applicant shall maintain any perimeter fencing or install landscaping in good condition for the first two years following issuance of the final certificate of occupancy. Any plant materials substantially diseased or dead shall be removed and replaced. Mature trees, particularly those proximate to the lot line, should be maintained to the extent possible. Landscaping shall not obstruct line of sight for driveway accesses on Scranton Ave or Main Street.
Condition five, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Condition six, the applicant shall be responsible for maintenance of the premises, including trash and snow removal.
Condition six, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Uh, seven, there's a question mark.
Yeah, I can...
Uh, the applicant shall comply with any long-term pollution prevention plan or other requirements of the Conservation Commission.
All right, condition seven as revised without a question mark. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Uh, condition eight, each condition in this decision shall run with the land and shall, in accordance with its terms, be applicable to and binding on the applicant and the applicant's successors in his signs.
Condition eight, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Condition nine, the height of the building shall be limited to thirty-eight feet due to the penthouse of the elevators. The applicant shall provide a height certification to the building department and Zoning Board of Appeals at framing.
Condition nine, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Condition ten, where this is a comprehensive permit, or where this comprehensive permit is granted specifically, under Master and Law's forty-B, Section twenty to twenty-three, allowing the override of local zoning and density, there should be no as-of-right changes made to the subject property. Any changes requested shall be properly submitted to the Zoning Board of Appeals, as provided for under Master and Law's Chapter forty-B and the associated regulations.
Right, condition ten, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Condition eleven, the development shall be limited to a maximum of forty-eight units within a single building with a total of forty-eight bedrooms, including one studio unit. Any basement space may not be used as bedroom space.
Condition eleven, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Condition twelve, parking or storage of any unregistered vehicle, boat, recreational vehicle, or trailers on the premises is strictly prohibited.
Condition twelve, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Condition thirteen, there should be no accessory structures on the premises, including sheds.
Condition thirteen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Condition fourteen, the site inspector, acting in town engineering stead, will be specifically responsible for inspections as directed by town engineering, ensuring adherence to the requirements in the Soil, Erosion and Sediment Control Standard Conditions, Appendix A, including but not limited to the inspection and approval of the driveway subgrade, gravel base, binder course and curbing, finish course, dry wells and stormwater pertinences. At no point shall the contractor construct on a driveway surface that was not inspected and approved by the site inspector. The site inspector will be specifically responsible to review the as-built plans for compliance with the approved plans.
Condition fourteen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Condition fifteen, all stormwater runoff shall be directed to recharge within the premises.
Condition fifteen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Condition sixteen, maintenance and repair of dry wells, leaching trenches, catch basins, manholes, and subsurface leaching systems, in addition to the fences on the property lines. The driveways, as well as snow plowing, shall be the responsibility of the applicant.
Condition sixteen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Condition seventeen, dark sky compliant lighting shall be provided, and spotlights are prohibited. Any lighting installed to a side or rear of the building as required to meet code should be dark sky compliant and not shed light off the premises.
Condition seventeen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Condition eighteen, the applicant shall provide the Zoning Board of Appeals with a copy of the audited cost certification of the development within one hundred and eighty days of the completion of construction.
Condition eighteen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Nineteen, any change in the plans submitted and approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals should be submitted to the Zoning Board of Appeals for approval prior to implementation of said change. The zoning administrator may make a determination as to whether the changes are substantially as shown on the approved plans, referenced in condition number one above, and essentially minor in nature and can be approved administratively, or whether the applicant must submit the change to the ZBA pursuant to seven sixty CMR fifty-six point oh five eleven. Changes made prior to an approval may be subject to a full hearing and are at risk that the ZBA may deny the request, subjecting any unapproved construction be ordered undone.
Condition nineteen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Condition twenty, this comprehensive permit shall be a master permit, which shall subsume all local permits and approvals normally issued by local boards. All local boards shall issue all necessary permits and approvals after reviewing such plans, only to ensure that they are consistent with the comprehensive permit in applicable state and federal laws.
Condition twenty, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Twenty-one, this permit shall lapse three years from the date on which this decision is filed with the town clerk's office. If a substantial use of the comprehensive permit has not sooner commenced, except for good cause shown, as determined by the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Condition twenty-one, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Prior to site work. Condition twenty-two, there should be no access to the premises by workers prior to the approved construction hours of seven AM or after seven PM, Monday through Saturday. No Sunday or holiday hours are allowed absent an emergency. All construction vehicles shall remain strictly on the subject property and not obstruct sidewalks or park on abutting streets. Construction vehicles are prohibited from idling on or near the premises outside of construction hours. During construction, effort shall be undertaken to minimize impacts on abutters, including securing dumpsters, stabilizing soil to guard against erosion from rain event, utilizing a wash station, and ensuring the public roadways are kept clean, in compliance with the town's Soil, Erosion and Sediment Control Standard Conditions, eight twenty twenty, Appendix A, with the Zoning Board of Appeals as the permitting authority. The site shall be secured from the predicted wind, rain, or snow conditions. The applicant shall consult with the town engineering site inspector regarding a preferred construction route to protect town roads and installation of a wash station and dust management during construction, and shall comply with general engineering requirements. So, so you don't have to say with the Zoning Board of Appeals replacing engineering in that document, right? You just, because the document names engineering?
Right, so I think where you have a site inspector, they're acting in...
No, I'm just asking on that way you say the town Soil, Erosion and Sediment Control stands with the Zoning Board of Appeals as the permitting authority, that will handle that it wouldn't be the engineering division?
Yeah, that's true.
All right, pass second. All right, condition twenty-two, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Twenty-three, the applicant shall show the gas, electric, water, and sewer lines on the plan submitted for building permit with a copy of town, with a copy to town engineering and the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Condition twenty-three, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Condition twenty-four, just to get rid of this question mark typo. The applicant shall sign the illicit, the applicant shall sign the illicit discharge form for stormwater management and shall install silt sacks to catch basins, including at the southwest corner and behind the buildings. Downstream stormwater structures shall be protected during construction. Additional protection of existing stormwater structures shall be added if deemed necessary by the site inspector. Modification, repair, maintenance, or replacement of installed protection measures shall be made if deemed necessary by the site inspector or as required by the Conservation Commission.
Uh, there's two periods after the buildings, and we would need a period after the Conservation Commission. All right, other than that, we okay with that?
Yeah, and it is called the illicit discharge form, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
I know, it looks a little...
It looks...
Looks a little strange, doesn't it? Yeah. All right, so, condition twenty-four is revised. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Condition twenty-five, the applicant shall provide to the police, building department, and ZBA the name, phone number, and email address of the project contact individual for the duration of the construction process, ensuring that any questions or concerns, including those of abutters and residents, are timely managed.
Condition twenty-five, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Twenty-six, the applicant shall meet with the Falmouth Police Department to determine when or if police details would be required. All police details required by the Falmouth Police Department or per the applicant's own choice shall be paid for by the applicant.
Condition twenty-six, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Twenty-seven, at the applicant's expense, a site inspector will be designated by the town for this project to act, oh, to act in the stead of town engineering. From the firms that, firms that have been pre-vetted by the town, due to the town's lack of capacity, conduct oversight inspections. The site inspector will perform or oversee inspections, testing, material approval, reports, or other construction-related services required, including compliance with the town's Soil, Erosion, and Sediment Control Standard Conditions, Appendix A, and report directly to the town's engineering department. The applicant shall establish a fifty-three G account through the Zoning Board of Appeals for the site inspector.
Right, condition twenty-seven, all those...
One quick, do we have to, uh, indicate an amount, or is that a percentage?
What do you mean, an amount, Jerry?
They're going to establish an account. How's it going to be, how much is going to be in your account?
So, we typically get an estimate from the site inspector, and the intent is that the ear engineer who's been working on the project thus far, the intent is to maintain that same party through the site inspection process.
But no amount needs to be there, though. They're going to put money into this account?
Correct.
Okay.
So, the estimate would be based on what the site inspector estimates.
That's fine, okay.
Depends what's being proposed.
Correct.
So, I just have one other question. So, it says it in report directly to the town's engineering department, which is understandable, but do we get a copy of anything? So, maybe with, with a copy to Zoning Board of Appeals?
Do we want a copy?
We've had issues with, I don't expect anything here, but we've had issues with other properties where we're not getting the information that's...
Oh, okay, the lack of, not necessary, that would...
Especially if they're going to the trouble of establishing, you know, putting money into a fifty-three G account, then we definitely want documentation of that.
Let me just hit CC.
Right. All right, so, condition twenty-seven as revised. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Twenty-eight, prior to starting work under the comprehensive permit, the applicant and general contractor shall hold a pre-construction meeting with the building commissioner, town engineer, water superintendent, department of public works representative, fire inspector, site inspector, zoning administrator, board of health agent, and wastewater superintendent to review the conditions to ensure compliance with this decision and town requirements.
Condition twenty-eight, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Twenty-nine, construction shall be in accordance with all requirements of town engineering, including the town's twenty twenty soil erosion sediment control standard conditions, appendix A. The applicant shall request inspections in writing at least twenty-four hours in advance to the site inspector or town department. Reinspection fees shall be per subsection three oh five dash five to the town and as negotiated with the site inspector contract. No construction shall commence until inspections for the below items have been approved. A, required erosion and sediment controls are installed and approved. B, a stabilized construction entrance and wash station is installed and approved. C, stormwater infiltration areas are protected and the protection means are approved. And D, the limited work is demarcated in the field and approved. E, any findings related to mitigation necessary from the twenty-one E report shall be shared with the town engineering, the site inspector, and the zoning board of appeals. The applicant shall be responsible for any required mitigation with appropriate town approval.
All right, condition twenty-nine as stated, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thirty, thirty, the driveway shall remain private.
Condition thirty, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Thirty-one, the town is specifically not waiving permits, permits or fees associated with construction, including but not limited to the water line, water tapping sleeve and valve, water meters, sewer connection and services and engineering, rate of waywork and building department fees. Permit applications and plans for the water and sewer service shall be submitted to the department of public works, water superintendent and wastewater superintendent. Driveways shall be privately owned and maintenance shall be the responsibility of the applicant in perpetuity. Any required utility easement shall be in a form and manner as prescribed by the town.
Condition thirty-one, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Thirty-two, plans shall show location of sewer components and water service. Plans shall state all standards, policies, construction practices, or rules and regulations of the Falmouth Water Department shall be adhered to throughout the duration of the project.
Condition thirty-two, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Thirty-three, strike the questions. Prior to the installation of any stormwater leaching facilities, the site inspector shall observe the bottom of the excavation and the applicant's engineers shall verify that the elevation is a minimum of two feet above estimated seasonal high groundwater.
Condition thirty-three, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Prior to building permit. Thirty-four, the water superintendent and wastewater superintendent are required to sign off on the application prior to the issuance of any building permit.
Condition thirty-four, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Thirty-five, the applicant or development entity owned and controlled by the applicant shall establish itself as a limited dividend organization prior to the issuance of a building permit, as required by seven sixty CMR fifty six point oh four. The applicant must remain in compliance as a limited dividend organization, stewardship profits.
Condition thirty-five, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Thirty-six, the applicant or development entity shall purchase the subject parcel and provide confirmation of ownership to the zoning board of appeals prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Condition thirty-six, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Thirty-seven, final addressing and unit designation shall be as provided by town engineering. Do you have to put that subsection in there? Ninety-nine one.
So this, this particular addressing is...
Only for the individual units, not the building?
Discussing, engineering, designating the address as opposed to the applicant posting it, so...
Same thing.
We, we could, we could ask, we could ask that they subsequently post as assigned by...
I just want to make sure that that's understood by the sentence. Final addressing and unit designation shall be provided to town engineering, that sounds like you're just giving them...
Right, so what, what happens is the town engineers will actually assign an address to the building, and then they will likely also have a designation on how they want the units numbered or lettered or whatever their scheme is for emergency purposes. So this is a note to the applicant that they will follow the scheme that town engineering designs.
Okay, so do we need to, that's what I'm asking, so do we need to reference anyways?
And then you could just say, post in accordance with...
Subsection ninety-nine one.
All right, so are we going to make revisions there?
We're just going to add that subsection ninety-nine one, which is posting of numbers in time limit of compliance, posting of address.
Very good. All right, so condition thirty-seven as revised, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Thirty-eight, prior to the issuance of a building permit for the building or unit, the applicant is required to submit a request to DHCD for final approval of the project in accordance with the comprehensive permit rules seven sixty CMR fifty six point oh four, and the guidelines including part three concerning affirmative fair housing, marketing, and resident selection, a copy of the final approval letter shall be submitted to the zoning board of appeals.
All right, condition thirty-eight, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Late night for the geese.
Well, isn't there a, I think there's a lunar eclipse tonight, too. So thirty-nine, this permit shall not take effect until a copy of the decision bearing the certification of the town clerk, that twenty days has elapsed after the decision had been filed in the office of the town clerk with no appeal being filed, or that an appeal has been filed within such time, is recorded in the Barnstable Registry of Deeds. Any person exercising rights under a duly appealed comprehensive permit does so at risk that a court may reverse the permit and that any construction performed under the permit may be ordered undone.
All right, condition thirty-nine, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Forty, water service application shall be made as required by the water superintendent, including any plans or media requests?
Condition forty, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Forty-one, prior to the issuance of any building permit, the applicant shall, A, prepare the final draft of a monitoring agent, of a monitoring agreement, or mass docs affordable housing restriction that includes monitoring and property management agreement, and submit said draft to the board for approval as to form by town council. B, submit to the board of appeals evidence of a final approval from the subsidizing agency as required by the project eligibility letter, and master general laws, chapter forty B regulations.
All right.
Forty-one.
Yep, condition forty-one, all those in favor?
Aye.
Forty-two, the applicant shall update the certified plot plan to show the merger
of these, of the two lots with the lot designation assigned by the assessor, address, an address assigned by engineering, with a copy of the updated plan submitted to the zoning board of appeals. No building permit can be applied for until the plan has been recorded with the assessor's parcel identification.
Condition forty-two, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Prior to occupancy permit, forty-three, the building address and unit number shall be posted by the applicant, oh, here it is, by, in accordance with subsection ninety-nine one, affixing eligible numbers required, and it should have after that in time limit for compliance, as formerly assigned by town engineering with the building permit application, and approval by the fire prevention inspector prior to issuance of an occupancy permit.
So condition forty-three as revised, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Forty-four, two parking spaces shall be designated for handicap parking only. Eight parking spaces are proposed within five feet of the northeasterly property line of the project site. A waiver is requested to allow parking within five feet of a property line.
Condition forty-four, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Forty-five, all residential units will be visitable and four units will be handicap accessible.
Forty-five, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Forty-six, a certified as-built plan shall be provided to the building department, copied to ZBA for review for conformance to the approved plans prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. The as-built plan shall be an overlay on the site layout plan, with the addition of the proposed stormwater management system, structures, and pipes added to serve as the approved base plan, plus water lines and sewer components. Any deviation from the approved plan shall be clearly shown in red line over the base plan, which should be faded back for clarity. The as-built shall be certified by both a licensed surveyor with a registered engineer that work was performed in conformance with the approved plans and all permits.
Condition forty-six, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Forty-seven, final lottery agent, lottery plan, and marketing plan shall be submitted to the zoning board of appeals prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
Forty-seven, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Forty-eight, scratch the question. As-built drawings shall be submitted to the water superintendent and include any ties for valves, hydrants, or fittings on the water main, with water pressure testing provided. As-built drawings shall be submitted to the wastewater superintendent, providing sewer information, including swing ties from the building corners, any sewer cleanouts, location of manholes, and sewer invert elevations at building and at each manhole.
Condition forty-eight, as revised, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Forty-nine, the final certificate of occupancy shall not be issued until all the required site work, including landscaping, drainage, or other improvements are completed as confirmed by the site inspector. The developer may request that the ZBA consider a bond for the value of any uncomplete work, to ensure that work is completed in accordance with the plans.
Condition forty-nine, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Condition fifty, to the extent permitted by law and by the subsidizing agency, DHCD, preference for the rental of seventy percent of the affordable units in the initial lottery shall be given to, A, persons or families who are found with residence and/or B, the parent of current Falmouth residents, and/or C, employees of the town of Falmouth or those employed within the town of Falmouth. The local preference shall be implemented by a lottery agent approved by the zoning board of appeals. Prior to conducting the lottery, the lottery agent shall submit a final lottery plan to the zoning board of appeals for its approval. All costs associated with the lottery plan shall be exclusively borne by the applicant.
Condition fifty, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Fifty-one, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall, A, submit a final executed copy of the property management agreement to include installation, operation, and maintenance of common facilities, and B, submit a final executed copy of the monitoring services agreement. Reports of the monitoring agent shall be provided after initial rental of all units, then annually thereafter, to the zoning board of appeals.
Condition fifty-one, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
So waivers. Fifty-two, any waiver not requested or voted by the zoning board of appeals is deemed denied. The board finds the need for affordable housing outweighs local concerns and votes as follows on the waivers requested.
Twenty-two, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Fifty-three, section two forty dash sixty-seven A, minimum lot width?
Fifty-three, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Fifty-four, section two forty sixty-nine and two forty-two forty H three, maximum lot coverage by structures, pavement, and parking?
Fifty-four, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Fifty-five, section two forty dash sixty-nine and two forty dash two forty H four, maximum lot coverage by structures?
Fifty-five, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Fifty-six, section two forty dash seventy and section two forty-two forty H five, maximum building height?
Fifty-six, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Fifty-seven, section two forty dash seventy, maximum building stories?
Fifty-seven, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Fifty-eight, section two forty dash sixty-eight A two, front yard setback. The zoning bylaw requires a minimum front yard setback of fifty feet in the B two zoning district for multifamily dwellings exceeding two and a half stories. The BR zoning district requires a minimum front yard setback of twenty feet for all buildings. Section two forty dash two twenty H, H, H six A. The proposed front yard setback to Main Street is twenty-five point nine feet. The building front yard is located in the BR zoning district. A waiver of section two forty dash sixty-eight A two is required unless the BR setback is deemed to override the B two setback under two forty dash two twenty H six A.
All right, fifty-eight, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Fifty-nine, section two forty dash one oh eight, parking requirements?
Fifty-nine, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Sixty, section two forty fifty-one five and section two forty-two forty GB, multifamily units and density?
Sixty, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Sixty-one, section two forty-two forty I, curb cuts?
Sixty-one, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Session two forty-two forty B one B, mixed-use construction in excess of ten thousand square feet?
Sixty-two, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Sixty-three, section two forty dash one ninety-two, site plan review?
Sixty-three, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Sixty-four, sewer bylaw, code of Falmouth, section one eighty dash fifty-five. The town of Falmouth sewer bylaw requires a variance for change of use, increased flows in excess of ten percent.
Sixty-four, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Sixty-five, Falmouth Wetlands regulation, FWR ten point one eight, resource area buffer zone mitigation, ten point one eight point three, ten point one eight point five, ten point one eight point ten eight, rest, restoration of degraded resource area buffer within mitigation plantings is, so...
Here's where we're getting into the conservation, right? All right.
So the conservation commission has not closed their hearing, so they were not able to opine on how the board would vote on that particular condition, waiver.
So if we vote to deny the waiver, it still approves the project and they would just come back for...
You, you can do that, and then the applicant could come back for an insubstantial change once conservation has finished the hearing.
Right, so conservation, they, they would have their, whatever it might be, conditions of, all right, they, they would have their final decision, the applicant would come back for an insubstantial change, and they would have the proper documentation for us to make those...
Mr. Chairman, can I ask for a point of order, please?
So the hearing is closed, but briefly, Attorney Monahan, what might it be?
Well, I think it's a point of order on this because the proceeding under the Falmouth Conservation Commission is under the State Wetlands Protection Act. They're not considering those waivers in that proceeding. They're not acting under the local bylaw, so you don't have a basis for denying waivers that zoning board comprehensive permit rules, specifically three one one dash five point oh four. The board shall not delay or deny an application on the grounds that any state or federal approval has not been obtained. That's what the Conservation Commission is doing. So if there were comments to be received on those waivers, they should have been received within thirty days of the filing of the application and the initial hearing. That's the procedure. So it, it seems simple to deny waivers, but in my view, denying a necessary waiver is a substantive denial of a permit. So my suggestion would be to add a condition that the order of conditions approved by the Conservation Commission under the State Wetlands Protection Act shall be submitted to the board prior to issuance of a building permit. Then you know that the Conservation Commission has reviewed the project and has approved it, and it's tied to this permit. That's what was done in Little Pond Place. And the difference here is that we filed for the COMCOM approval contemporaries to this application because of the timing of funding, but normally it wouldn't have been done until after this proceeding was closed. So, so tying those waivers to that state proceeding, I think, is improper, and would ask you to reconsider that.
All right, thank you, Attorney Monahan, and through the administrator, if we go back to findings number six, we made the finding that the application was under review by the Conservation Commission under the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, so those are the state regs. If you go to the last sentence, it also says that a waiver from certain provisions of the Falmouth Wetlands regulations have also been requested, or has been requested.
Not to conservation. Wait, they're not acting under the local bylaw at all.
So I guess the, you know, the only issue to the board here, or one of the issues to the board here, is that you don't have specific advice from the Conservation Commission that you would typically get on the wetland issue because they haven't closed. And now while they're examining this under the state regs, they also have not provided you with advice under the local because they haven't finished.
Is there any objection to the way Attorney Monahan proposed?
So do you know to the administrator on what was proposed in making this conditional, would that cover this? My only question is, because I, first, I just don't know what they mean.
Right.
I, I don't know what the definition of, you know, depth of drainage for bay, or what the habitat evaluation was, or...
And I think part of the issue is we weren't anticipating to go through our own review of this project this quickly, so...
Actually, the depth of drainage for bay was, I guess, just a matter of what depth is typically used, and the conservation administrator was able to advise that it would be fine for the board to waive that because that does match the typical process. But I guess as far as the other wetland items, typically this board gets advice from various boards and committees that have specialties to support your decisions. And I guess the only matter that would bring up to you here is that you don't have advice from conservation because they're not done yet. So I guess it just, excuse me, is a matter of whether the board's comfortable with voting on those or not.
I mean, given, I guess, everybody in town is in favor, I'd hate to jeopardize this for a pure procedural issue. And I'm not saying we have, but it seems like, you know, if they get the proper Conservation Commission approvals prior to issuing a building permit and submitting it to us, you know, that assumes there's no other substantial changes in, in the construction plans or something like that.
Yeah, we, we...
So that would be sixty-five, sixty-six, and sixty-seven, we could vote sixty-eight?
Sixty-eight, the Conservation Administrator was fine with.
So sixty-eight, FWR two point oh seven nine, depth of drainage for bay?
All right, condition sixty-eight, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Sixty-nine, section two forty dash one oh nine E, zoning bylaw parking requirements?
Condition sixty-nine, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Seventy, section two forty ninety-nine A and section two forty one thirteen C, zoning bylaw coastal pond overlay district?
Condition seventy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Seventy-one, section two forty dash one sixteen and section two forty one one nine, landscape design standards?
Condition seventy-one, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
But that was quick.
It sure was, all right, circling back to...
Sixty-seven, um, five, six, and seven.
Sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, all right.
Could I make a suggestion?
Briefly, Attorney Monahan?
Two suggestions to, one is to look to your peer review, who was hired to do the peer review, basically for drainage, stormwater, and wetland resource issues. Peer review engineer did not identify any issues with these waivers. So number one, if you don't have comments in your file, since the hearing is closed from conservation, how is anything conservation going to be doing going to impact you because Because you can't admit that evidence. It should have been supplied months ago. So, you have to, I think, look to the evidence that you have in your record. And the evidence in your record is your peer review report on those specific waivers.
Noreen, how long have they had it?
Conservation?
Yeah.
Uh, approximately the same amount of time we have.
Okay, so, it, did, any scheduling is the reason why it hasn't been addressed?
I think there have been some plan requests that they've made, et cetera, but they're, they're just not done. So, I don't have any advice from them on recommendations for votes on these local bylaws.
So, you could, are you, um, familiar with the conditional comment for Little Pond Place that they used?
I'm not.
So, hypothetical question, or procedural question, we vote to grant these waivers, and they have a problem with the plan coming back. How is that, what we say supersedes what their concerns would be?
Not necessarily.
Not on the state, right?
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I, I have my opinion.
Keeping in mind that this is a state permit, too.
Correct. I'm just not aware, I can't advise you about whether...
It's just a shame, because everything else is so clean on this.
Correct. You know, so my recommendation would be that if you are not comfortable with voting this, that you could deny just those three waiver requests, and that when Conservation is done, you, the applicant could bring a minor modification to have those three waivers reconsidered, so that your decision is done, it's filed, the appeal period is expiring, whatever, and that you're just doing a minor modification for the...
Should we do it the opposite way around? Approve it, and then if something comes up?
How do you take something back that you approved?
Yeah, that'd be tough to do.
Well, it may be tough to do, but if it's state law, we could find a way. This has to be in compliance with state law.
What I'm doing right now is, I'm, I'm, well, I'm, I'm in my email account right now, trying, trying to pull up Little Pond Place, that was, uh, spring, that was Spring Pond Road, right?
These are three, four years ago.
Spring Bars Road.
So, if we condition this on an order of condition? And there was an issue that came up in the order of conditions? The applicant would then have to come back to us anyways, right?
Well, I guess, you know, these, these are very specific waivers, and one of them is talking about a setback from a coastal bank with a particular slope within twenty-five feet. I mean, I just, I can't advise you how to vote. If you're comfortable with the language, you're welcome to vote it. I think what I'm suggesting to you is if there is any concern, it's my suggestion that revisiting those items would not hold up the process.
My personal concern is that everything else was done and prepared, and the applicant was ready for all of this. You know, why, I, I can't see why we hold, I mean, why we'd hold them up for something that's not their fault.
I agree with Scott, and given the reputation.
Say that again?
I agree with you.
Wow.
It's on the record.
All right, Jerry, give me a little.
Well, you're learning.
No, no, it's true, I mean...
You are learning, you know.
All right, so I...
You, you almost had me.
I just, I just pulled up, I, I can't say it's actually what was, you know, on record. It's, it's a draft in my email of, uh, the Spring Bars Road project. Had two conditions, one was the applicant shall secure an order of conditions approval pursuant to the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act and regulations thereto for the project prior to issuance of any building permit for the project. Copy of said approval shall be submitted to the Board of Appeals prior to the issuance of any building permit. There was a condition after that. It said the applicant shall secure an order of conditions approval for the stormwater management plan pursuant to the stormwater management regulations and requirements of the Massachusetts DEP Stormwater Management Regulations and the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act. Copy of said approval shall be submitted to the Board of Appeals prior to the issuance of any building permit.
Right, so the second one of those sounds a little more, it relates to something different. First half sounded fun.
First half sounded really good.
Right, the first, yeah.
But it sounds like we have some pressure.
Again, I like the first part of that better than I like the second.
If you utilize some of that language or whatever, how do you deal with the voting on the waiver request?
Our interpretation, our, our personal interpretation of what we deemed state and, I mean, he did allow some sort of presentation in this, which is on the record. And she gave a valid argument on why we should.
I mean, I, I guess what I would say to you is that the Conservation Commission did not give advice in the referral because they hadn't reviewed the material.
We have a lot of cases, Noreen, where we don't get any referrals either, that don't give advice, and we don't hold that.
Right.
Or use it as leverage against one way or the other.
Whatever, whatever the board's pleasure is, fine.
All right, and, uh, forgive me, cause I'm scrolling and reading at the same time. Uh, if you scroll down to the bottom of that comprehensive permit, uh, there was this, the last statement made, number twenty-five, the applicant has requested, and the Board of Appeals has, oh, and, or, the applicant has requested, and the Board of Appeals has granted the waivers from local rules as follows, as required to permit the construction operation of the project in accordance with MGL chapter forty B and the regulations thereto, seven sixty CMR fifty-six, uh, at all.
So, if one of these doesn't comply with an order of conditions when it's received, does that mean we've pre-waved it? We make this subject to the order of conditions, and one of these waivers doesn't comply with the order of conditions? It can't be valid, right, cause we've already waived it?
We can't waive at the state requirement.
Are these local?
Yeah, but F, FWR, that's, that's the, those are the local regs. Those are the local wetland regs.
But we can waive local regs, then.
Does state supersede local in this case?
Yes.
Depending what the issue is.
Well, then, if the state supersedes local, and there's justification on the state side of it, and it gives us legitimate grounds, grounds to vote it at the state level.
I don't think...
I think... So, uh, I don't wanna, so the Conservation Commission, their authority is under the Wetlands Prote-, the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, and, uh, Conservation Commissions are allowed to have regulations that go above and beyond the state regulations. So, uh, Conservation Commissions, they can follow Massachusetts, the, the state regs, or they can adopt their own, and they can...
They could be stricter, not less.
They could be more strict, not less.
So, in the event we voted this?
Right.
In the event we voted to grant relief on this, and CONCOM had an issue with it?
Can't do anything, cause we already granted relief.
Right.
You sure we can't do anything?
So, we stand in for the Conservation Commission. On forty B's, we stand in for each individual department, so once we waive it for the department...
Only when it's easy?
No, no, I mean, once, yeah, when it's easy. So, we, so we basically, when we waive this, we're waiving this as their department.
Isn't that in our purview, then?
No, it is, I just don't know what is, okay?
I, I'm just asking you both as a whole, to look at the overall, what have these, what, what is this, this application skimped on prior to this?
Oh, no, I understand.
About one thing?
I understand, I just don't know what resource area buffer zone mitigation is under all those things, and...
Apparently, we knew what the man-made coastal bank was, cause we voted to, uh...
That's exactly what we voted to.
Well, that was, was discussed, I understand that.
I mean, we're not supposed to be subject matter experts in this, I mean, we generally follow the advice of, uh...
As long as we understand, if we waive it, even if it's conditioned in their order of condition, it's not...
If there's no order of conditions, there's no project.
And if it was out in the middle, if it was out in the middle of nowhere?
I'm not concerned with where it's located.
And, and we didn't know what was around there, and there wasn't subsequent structures?
Can you read that first half on the...
Give me a second to scroll back, back, that first condition?
That first one, just the first paragraph, that sounded good.
It's a split vote in this case, four, two-two, what it, how does it carry?
It has to be majority.
Oh, you need majority.
Simple, simple majority. The applicant shall secure an order of conditions approval pursuant to the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act and regula- and regulations thereto for the project prior to issuance of any building permit for the project. Copy of said approval shall be submitted to the Board of Appeals prior to the issuance of any building permits.
So, why don't we throw that in there, and then we could just...
So, two-two would be a denial.
On the, on the, not for the project, on the conditions.
Just these waivers.
I agree, Scott has went tremendously since the opinion.
Keep it up, Jerry.
Well, I'm not looking to hold anything up, I just want to be consistent and come to the right decision.
So, we added that in?
Especially looking at previous decisions of the board, yeah, with forty B projects.
I think it's low risk, given the facts before us and everything else.
I mean, I'm not that concerned with sixty-seven, cause we've been out there. Wildlife habitat.
Certainly.
It's pretty much buried things next door, and there's a parking lot next to it, too. Um, we know where the coastal bank is. We know where there was the draining issue, but they were gonna handle that. And on resource area buffer, I would assume they're gonna have to do mitigation planning anyways. There's nothing there now.
Didn't, didn't Mike Graff talk about redoing that, that wall back there as well? To improve that situation?
To improve the drainage issue.
Right, that's in, that's in, that's in the record, right?
Sure did.
We talked, we talked extensively about how they were gonna clean up that corner with walls, because it's substandard now.
Right.
So, it continues to be substandard as long as we don't do anything about it.
So, if we waived these, but we put in, under that, using that other clause, make it conditioned on the order of conditions, is that, this?
Also, it can't be constructed without Conservation signing off on it.
Right, but there's enough language here to be able to draft that in a way that it can be granted relief, wouldn't you say?
Yeah, we, we could put in the condition of the order of conditions prior to...
Issuing the building.
That, 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 that condition that I've been reading off.
So, we'd add that one in, um, under the prior to building permit section. Yeah, we add that to the prior to issuance of the building permit.
Not, not, not to mention, we're not fighting against a determination from CONCOM that it's gonna be a no.
No.
There's a very good chance that...
Well, they could say no.
We're good.
If they say no, they say no.
And then they can, uh, give us little things.
So, at the end of prior to the issuance of any building permits, so that starts on, oh, you know, page number. Forty-two is the last condition. So, you wanna make a new forty-three, that says the applicant shall secure an order of conditions approval pursuant to the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act and regulations thereto?
That's forty-three?
New, new forty-three.
Now, you're adding in under prior to building?
Yeah, so adding an A.
Prior to occupancy from forty-two.
Okay, so why don't we do like forty-two A, so we don't have to...
Let's do that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Numbering, okay, so forty-two A. And we will add in that language.
There's even room down there.
With the magic of technology, Noreen, I'm copying and pasting and sending this, sending this to your account right now.
Ashley pulled it up, too.
Ashley's got it? Yeah.
What number was that?
Fourteen.
So, can you just read that and throw forty-two A in front of it, so I know what it says? Throw it to me, and I'll read it.
So, we have to rescind forty-two and then revote it?
No, we're adding, no, we're adding forty-two A.
Forty-two, we'll, we'll vote on forty-two A, certainly, hell's up.
Let me read it.
Yeah, if you can, just read.
So, the applicant shall secure an order of conditions approval for the stormwater management plan pursuant to the stormwater management regulations and requirements of the Massachusetts DEP Stormwater Management Regulations and Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act. A copy of said approval shall be submitted to the Board of Appeals prior to issuance of any building permit.
Do we have that order of conditions in there? Is that different from the one you read?
No, that's it.
Not much, if it, if at all.
Will we go on forty-two A now?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Voting condition forty-two A?
Does, does that cover order of conditions? Didn't mention any, that's what I'm asking.
Oh, I thought...
I thought the one you did, that's...
There is another one prior to that, do you want that one, too?
Yeah, maybe the one prior, oh, even about that one. Okay.
Attorney Monahan, you had a copy of that all along?
She just found it.
She watched the city.
I got piles of paper, I just found it.
So, forty-two A?
Laura, Jerry and I are exhausted, and that could have all been avoided.
Carry the, the permit in the back pocket.
Patriots apply in.
Sorry, just found it.
So, forty-two A would be, the applicant shall secure an order of conditions approval pursuant to Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act and regulations hereto for the project prior to the issuance of any building permit for the project. Copy of said approval shall be submitted to the Board of Appeals prior to the issuance of any building permit. That'd be the first.
That's what I've been saying.
Let it be said, let it be read, let it be done.
So, let's vote that one?
All right, so, the new condition forty-two A, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Now, the only other question is, do you also wanna have the next one that says, and you don't have to, the applicant shall secure an order of conditions approval for stormwater management plan pursuant to the stormwater management regulations and requirements of the Mass DEP Stormwater Management Regulations and Mass Wetlands Protection Act. A copy of said approval shall be submitted to the Board of Appeals prior to issuance of a building permit. Put both in.
So, you could include that?
Include that.
As part of forty-two A, you could just put the two together.
Subsection B.
Well, you already voted A, so why don't we just throw a B? We'll have to vote it again.
Forty-two B?
Just forget forty-two A and B, let's...
So, forty-two B, the applicant shall secure an order of conditions approval for the stormwater management plan pursuant to the stormwater management regulations and requirements of the Mass DEP Stormwater Management Regulations and Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act. Copy of said approval shall be submitted to the Board of Appeals prior to issuance of any building permit.
I thought we didn't like that condition about five minutes ago.
I know, now, you're...
It's five minutes later.
Yeah, all right, so, forty-two B? Forty-two B, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
All right, now we skip ahead.
All right.
Sixty-five under conditions, no wonder waivers. Falmouth Wetlands Regulation, FWR ten point one eight, resource area buffer zone mitigation, ten point one eight three, ten point one eight five, ten point one eight ten eight, restoration of graded resource area buffer with mitigation plantings.
All right. So, we're ready to vote, ready to vote sixty-five then?
Yep.
All right, sixty-five, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Sixty-six, uh, FWR ten thirty-six, ten thirty-seven C, coastal bank setback of twenty-five feet from a coastal bank with a slope greater or equal to four to one or within twenty-five feet of the top of such area of bank.
Sixty-six, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Sixty-seven, FWR ten point one seven one, wildlife habitat evaluation.
Sixty-seven, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. We can vote through it.
Yeah, but you know what, that was good work.
Yeah.
So, then, uh, I would make a motion to approve. I'll read it after, but I'm gonna have to second it, so... I'm gonna make a motion to approve to grant the comprehensive permit for the redevelopment of the seven-six-three Main Street Assessor Map forty-seven B, section nine, parcel thirteen, lot twenty-two, and Twenty-first Square and Avenue Assessors Map forty-seven B, section nine, parcel ten, lot two, Falmouth, Massachusetts, collectively the premises to include a total of forty-eight age-restricted sixty-two-plus residential units, all of which shall remain affordable in perpetuity, plus, in perpetuity, plus two thousand four hundred and two square feet of retail commercial space on the ground level, according to the above stated findings and conditions for case number sixty-nine dash twenty-one. Based on the findings stated herein and within the above stated conditions, I just need a second.
Second.
All right, thank you, Jerry. All right, so that motion was made by Bob, second by Jerry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. We did it!
Hey!
Yay!
All right, got a little rough toward the end there, but we fought through it.
Not really, that was good stuff.
Yeah. Thank you, Attorney Monahan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Get James back in here.
You got his, anybody got his text?
No.
Phone number?
Uh, I have it somewhere.
I got him. I got him.
Thank you all.
How's your arm?
It's healing.
Better?
Yeah.
Ew, what'd you do?
Ready for winter.
For the fall again, right?
All right.
Oh, no more falling.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, Noreen and Ashley, appreciate you guys' work.
Okey-dokey.
Hi, Laura.
Good night.
Good night.
I wasn't even watching, I was booking a vacation for February.
Okay. So includes item number three, board updates, are there any?
Did we get a date for the meeting on, in January?
Yes, I think, I got one, it was an email. Twenty-third, was it? Where is it?
It was in January twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth.
So is that a gun deal?
January twenty-ninth.
We bringing food?
As is tradition.
Well, we got to get an agenda food.
Yep, we'll, we'll put together agenda, pass it on.
Where, where, where are we having it?
Probably here.
I assume here.
I assume right here, did, do we?
Nine o'clock, correction?
In full portions.
I think if people have items they would like to have on the agenda, please send them, and in the meanwhile, I will start to assemble a list.
Now, when?
And I am going to see if I can ask somebody to come. To answer some questions for the board, if the person happens to be available.
Very good.
Now, I know it's an open meeting, is it all so televised?
No.
Doesn't have to be.
As long as it's properly noticed, we are good to go.
It's an open meeting, but it's not a hearing, so it's discussion alone, it's us.
Okay.
Board updates, oh, I'll, I think half of us were there, but town meeting was this past Monday and Tuesday, and on Monday night, I was, I was banished to the top section with COVID protocols, and I voiced our concerns regarding the overlay district.
And the codification passed?
The codification passed, all right.
All those zoning things pass, right, the definition?
The overlay passed, but it was amended.
So the overlay, they understand, so it did pass, but it can only occur in properties that are connected to town sewer.
Sewer, yep.
If there's a property that isn't connected now and they connect later, they actually have to go back to a town meeting vote to accept it.
Individually?
Individually, yep.
Kind of regulates it a little bit, spreads it out, so it's not just a.
Made half the map disappear, so that was good.
Yeah.
Anything else for board updates? For discussion, is there anything?
I think.
I want to remind the public.
Yeah, so, and I know you do your statements at the beginning of the meeting, and I think it may be, that might be a good area where you could remind the public that when we have anything that's currently before us, like you stated already, or anything that may be under appeal or litigation, that the public should not be attempting to contact board members.
Individually?
Discuss, right, so the board, the best advice, obviously, is not to discuss anything zoning related outside of the hearing, because if it's a potential future case, then you may have to recuse, and obviously, if it's something you're currently hearing, and definitely if it's under litigation, so, you know, it would be ideal if people didn't approach board members, but if they do, obviously, the best advice is just to state that you can't discuss it.
And to make sure that you.
And in those cases, the, the, even, even if, does there need to be a declaration? Or have it put on file?
It's, it's ideal, I mean, I, I would kind of suggest that if somebody's approached, who sent an email, then we have a record.
Because certainly some of these are more pronounced than accidental.
You know, I, I think the problem is, is that obviously, you know, it's a small enough community and people are involved in other organizations, or, or town meeting, or whatever it is, and so you are going to be exposed to certain things, but if you enter into a dialogue with somebody about a property or a particular circumstance, then you can't vote on it.
And I think Bob's intent was to educate the public, we all know we're not supposed to engage, but I think it's a good idea to, you know, every chance we get, to politely educate the public that we're not being rude, we just can't talk to you.
Correct.
And I think there's.
And they may not know that.
Right.
And it's there, and it's important to them, and they want to get it out.
Right.
And we come off looking like.
But it would potentially bar your impartiality.
I know, I understand that, I'm just saying.
For the future, if you've already discussed something with someone.
Which is why it's important to actually report it either way, because if not, and even if you think it was a minor issue, they can raise that issue later on.
Or somebody could raise it, they could say, hey, I talked to somebody at, you know, the laundromat, and we figured this out, well, okay, now if you haven't disclosed that, you're behind the hay balm too.
And there could be visual assumptions made.
Correct.
I like Bob's idea, because I've been on other committees, regulatory, where you file what you said to a third party, no matter how, when this is.
Right, I guess my advice is that you say nothing.
Nothing, I agree.
To, and, and you also don't let someone describe an extended story to you.
Exactly.
Because they're going to then say that you are listening, or they could make up that you consented to something, or whatever it is, so it's best just not to discuss anything that could potentially be before the board.
Right, and I think we have something briefly touching on that somewhere, and I can't even tell you where it is, it's somewhere in our rules, regulations somewhere, but members of the public don't always log on and.
No, the only good, the other good thing too, if you announce it in the meeting is, they are publicized meetings, so whether someone's here or not, someone, we're making this statement through the television.
Right.
Town wise.
And I get to hear it every night then.
For upcoming.
So everyone knows.
Agenda items, is, do we have, is it still in litigation, or when, when do we expect Liberty Green to come back in front of us? And there was another case where there was a procedural error.
Right, so Liberty Green was decided by the court, but I guess there's a question about whether our neighbors are going to pursue it or not, but.
We don't have a timeframe, we have to act, I guess that.
No, there's nothing, there's nothing for us to do action wise, because the court, the court essentially issued the permit.
Oh, they did? Well, we don't, well, I thought we had, okay. And what about the other one where there was a procedural error? A person was allowed to vote that couldn't have been allowed to vote, and we agreed to rehear that case.
So if there is, if, if, if a case is.
Actually, not, not to interrupt, and I, and I understand he's not trying to do anything that's, that's not called for, but because these are executive sessions and the minutes were released. I don't think we can discuss it at all.
Oh, I tried, that letter wasn't a public letter, okay.
Yeah, we can't talk about that one publicly.
And then I guess the only.
You can talk to Noreen privately about it.
But, but I do have a, a general question on, on some of these decisions we make that are basically where a peer, where the peer engineer is involved. So if, if it comes to light that the peer engineer is bringing up that there are violations or issues that, you know, whether they were mitigated now or will have to be. What else happens, I mean, is there any kind of consequences with a developer, or?
Well, I think therein lies the problem, because technically, the building commissioner is the zoning enforcement officer, and I would, I, enforcement meaning any decision that the zoning board has made in any conditions therein should be enforced by building. That being said, if a building permit itself has not been issued, there seems to be some misunderstanding about how these matters should be managed.
So when an eligibility letter comes to the town, it goes to what, it goes to town management, it doesn't come to us, correct, it goes to town management for comments with the state first?
It's forty B.
Then it would come to us only when we open up the hearings. So there's a section in there where we get these, these applications from the state, that specifically comments on whoever the developer is or the project manager, what is their experience, and has there been any issues on previous projects within the town? And I think we should make it clear to the town management or planner when they have to answer those letters, that if we know of a concern, or we wouldn't have seen it yet, you may, you may know in advance because you're a department head, that should be mentioned in the letter that goes back to the state, because by the time we get it, it's too late. And, and many forty B projects or forty As, a lot of times, they're the same developers that come back and forth because that's what they do, so I think it's even more important that the state knows if we have issues. Because I know, I mean, we've, in the last year, have had major issues.
Noreen, in your experience, have you ever seen where a town restricts the limit of permits because of the lack of integral department heads in the building process?
I have not.
I mean, we're going to get to a point where we don't, I mean, you've got people dropping off left and right here, except, except for the building permits are stacking up, stacking up, stacking up, and, you know, we've run into situations.
Well, you do have.
We can't get an answer back because there's nobody home.
Well, so you have an interim building commissioner now, and it's my understanding that those back permits, that things have been essentially caught up. But I guess the problem going forward is that this commissioner that you have now is only an interim person, and, you know, was essentially retired and had a limited amount of time that they could and wanted to devote to the community, so they don't have that ability to be here full time to give to the.
So there's a non-defined future until we get one, so that's what I'm saying, even if you put the, tap the brakes a little bit, have you ever seen that, no?
There's no condition that if, the town doesn't act within so many days, it's automatically approved.
I, I don't know what the state would provide.
Well, you have a constructive grant if that happens, that's what we don't want.
But is that for building permit?
Anything, even, even conservation if they didn't answer the three days, that's constructive grant.
Maybe because potentially, there could be a serious problem.
I mean, maybe we should have a memo, a memo too that goes to, to Julian as the town manager, because my other concern is that we're all aware that, and I don't know the extension, but we're all aware that, that town council is retiring. And we haven't had an assistant town council since the summer. So what kind of a legal position does it put this board in, and other boards will have the same issue, when we need legal advice to go over decisions, or, or specific advice, if they don't have anyone, so they're going to have to at least let us know what is their plan for that, so if they don't have a plan, then we should let them know that we are going to have to request that we have our own council when.
Yeah, but how do you, how do you do that, to go, I mean.
You make a formal.
How can you get outside council to represent you?
You make a.
Some cases against it.
The town manager has.
No, you make a, you just make a request for the town manager for the monies to get town council, he has to say yes or no, they very rarely say no, and then once he did, then we would have to go out and.
But in the past, Frank used to hire the, all council, whether it was arguing with us or not, was generally the contract approved by Frank.
So they pull.
On either, on either side of it?
There's a line item in the budget that, without outside counsel.
He approves the council.
So he doesn't actually approve the council, he has to approve that you use his funds, he always, he always adds a suggestion, but.
So if the town is suing us, and he's representing that side of the town.
Then we need separate counsel.
Then, he, he shouldn't be allowed, he can approve the money, but he shouldn't be allowed to get who we get to represent us.
And that's, and that's what happens, they release.
We, we always choose our own.
Oh, yeah.
But the reason I'm saying bring it up with management now is because I think this is going to happen. It's just, it's eventual, I mean, they've, they've said they don't want to hire an assistant until they hire, you know, the replacement, but it's a catch twenty-two, that's going to have to go out, how long does it take to get a replacement, then how long does it take to get an assistant? So they just have to be aware that we're going to be looking at issues where we may have to get monies for, I mean, look at.
Outside counsel.
I mean, a case, you know, you could have a case like tonight where, let's say we had wanted something reviewed, if town council can't because they have a conflict in that case, who do we go to, we can't go to the assistant.
I think we just, through you, Noreen, just should ask town council, or excuse me, the town administrator, what is the transition plan?
Yeah, what is your plan, what do they expect to do?
In for building.
They might have to hire.
They may have thought about it, if not, they may have a plan, but at least puts it on the radar.
It is nine thirty-four, by the way.
Yes.
So the only last little suggestion I have to the board, or perhaps, I know the issue was raised, was the subsidized housing inventory, and obviously, forty B requires that until the board, or the town actually hits ten, or exceeds, hits or exceeds ten percent affordable housing, that you are subject to continue to hear these comprehensive permit requests. That being said, there are certain safe harbors where if you achieve a certain number of units, according to your housing production plan, you can earn a one or two-year moratorium where you don't have to hear permits.
We tapping the brakes, that'll let everything catch up.
But you are only entitled to do that if the state certifies that you have hit your, or exceeded your goals. That being said, we have our housing, affordable housing coordinator is leaving the town as well.
How can you?
In a very short period of time. And I think it's probably important to this board that you have that inventory cleaned up by the end of this year.
So what is that called, an audit?
Well, no, you would need to have someone go through, well, sort of, they will need to go through and make sure that.
They have all the.
What is and what isn't?
All the units that the board has voted are properly listed on the town subsidized housing inventory form.
For the percentage.
So that you have a correct updated count, because now with Liberty Green and the court approving that comprehensive permit, those units are entitled to go back onto your subsidized housing inventory.
To the good.
So I think having an accurate number will potentially lead to.
So if a.
Well, we provide that number to her, don't we?
So if a project was approved.
Planning board or you or Ashley?
Well, so there, I think it, there was some misunderstanding about who was maintaining that, managing those numbers, and I think it had been done previously by zoning, but given the amount of work that we have now, we're not able to accommodate that as well.
Okay, I just, I just didn't know what the.
Because at one point, those numbers were looked at, and we weren't at seven, we were up in the eights.
Well, it's interesting that the housing production plan itself identified a number of units that the individual felt should be on.
They weren't counting, and they just weren't counting them.
But were not included, so.
And if that, if that.
But should have been.
Yeah.
Correct.
So if that was, and let's say we were at eight right now, that would have already helped us out.
Right, well, no.
It would already triggered that, right?
But, you know, the other part of it.
And in all likelihood, it, it's valid, but it has to be certified.
But the other part of it is that if you have earned a year or a two-year moratorium, you're entitled to that, and you've had five forty Bs at one point in time altogether.
Noreen, who certifies that?
The state, but there are.
Prepared by someone in town and certified by the state.
Right, but if you have whoever's typically working on that leaving, that may leave a gap.
Let me ask you a question now, is that calendar year, how does, chronologically, how does that trigger that?
Calendar year.
So if we started that calculation in twenty twenty-two, it would benefit us more than trying to rush it in before twenty twenty-two?
No, so what would happen is all the permits that you've issued through the last day of December of twenty twenty-one would be counted, and now that would, like I say, typically include Liberty Green.
When does that two years start, once, once the state reviews it and stamps it, is it, does it go two years from then, or two years from when you submit it, or two years when they feel like it?
Well, it could be, it could be one year or two years, but I guess.
Sometimes it's one year, but it could be either way.
What I would say is.
Even one year?
But you just need the certification.
We need to make sure that the state certifies that before someone files, because there are specific requirements of the board if someone files. So if somebody files for a comprehensive permit, but you don't have certification that you've achieved safe harbor, you don't have a way to deny that permit, whereas if you have certification from the state that you've met a goal, then you're able to deny hearing a permit.
Those projects don't have to be completed to count.
From my understanding, they count when you vote them in, but if it hasn't been completed within, what, two years? Or three years, they drop off.
Well, so there, there's different timelines, right, so, so.
This is a discussion for Saturday?
So, well, yeah, but I guess what I'm saying is, you know, with the board's backing, I would follow up and make sure that there was a, a person who had done some of this work for the town in the interim, and that, you know, where our housing coordinators leaving, that that same consultant might be able to do this update piece so that we're current. so that we're current.
So this is a weird question, so what's, they're leaving by the end of the year, correct?
Before, the end of this month.
So it may not, something like this may not occur, but when you have someone that's leaving a job like that that was familiar with the town, do we have the ability to invite them for commentary? Because they know what was going on and what wasn't going on? No?
You got to vote this to extend or get out?
Yeah.
Get out.
Get out.
That's what I say. Out.
When's our next meeting? December second?
December two.
And everyone enjoy Thanksgiving and see everyone on December second. Done.